So we're going to call this meeting to order 203. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Welcome everyone to this meeting of the Sacramento City Council. Please call the roll to establish a quarter.
Mayor Protem Ashby. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Steinberg is expected momentarily and Vice Mayor Shenier.
I'm here. So let's go ahead and do the pledge. Mr. Garrett, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
So folks could rise, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Just before we get started, I think the mayor is going to hop in on item 21. I'm sorry, item 22, but we're going to flip 21 and 22 when we get there. So we'll have the mayor join us and we have three presentations recognizing Francis Buford Pollan. Mr. Garrett, that would be you.
Great, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. It's my pleasure here to do a resolution group for the 100th birthday of Miss Frances Buford Pollan. Today to represent her is her son, Peter Pollan. You know, Frances is a, you know, very able and capable. Zoom is not one of those, but let me tell you some of the things that she was able to do and has been able to do. This Sunday, we had the pleasure of all going to her house, surprising her with the community of Tahoe Park for her 100th birthday. Our police officers, our first responders, many of the community members, and also her furry friends around Tahoe Park who she's very well known for. But this is the unique thing about Miss Frances Buford Pollan is that she's a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient here in our own city, and that is from her service to our country in World War II. She was part of the world, the Women's Air Force Service Pilots. And of 26,000 over the country that applied, only 1,800 were selected. She is one of a little over 30 that are still surviving. And in the war during World War II, she flew B-24, B-26 bombers, B-17 bombers, including hauling the targets so that our military personnel could practice shooting in the air. So a lot of courage that Miss Buford had. Most importantly, she has been a committed service member for our community. In the neighborhood, she helped her senior members of the community by even doing things as mowing their lawn as they got into their greater years. Proud Sacramento who grew up here in the farmland and the part of the first graduating class of McClatchy High School. So we all wish her a very, very happy and heartfelt 100th birthday. And all of us joined in signing this resolution naming the September 12th as Frances Buford Pollan Day. Also want to thank the mayor for issuing a key of the city for her years of committed service. To hear, to receive and recognize her is her son, Peter Pollan. So let's welcome Peter here.
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and members of the council, especially to councilmember Garrett for being there in person to help celebrate my mom's birthday. I'm honored to accept this on her behalf. We're very proud of her, inspired by her. I love being able to tell the all Hallows grade school classmates that both my parents were bomber pilots in World War II. So very excited that she's made it to 100 in the house that my parents bought in 1947 and that her friends and neighbors and family and councilmember Garrett were there to help celebrate. Especially like to also thank Madeline and Alejandro, his staff members that made this possible. So again, I'm very honored to represent her here today and to accept this honor. And I appreciate you all taking the time to recognize her on this amazing occasion.
Thank you, Peter. And I wanted to also thank the Veterans Affiliated Council of Sacramento. You know, a day after September 11th, one of the biggest messages that she gave us yesterday or on Sunday on her birthday was to support our young veterans coming back from the war. You know, Frances was not considered a veteran until 1977. The women who flew those planes and were part of the active war effort, who were serving our country, didn't have that level of support till much later in their life, until President Carter recognized them. And her biggest message was that for our veterans that are coming back and those who have returned home, to welcome them home and to support their needs. The last thing I wanted to quote before we move on here and wish her a happy birthday. She said something on Sunday that I took to heart about what's important about why we're all doing what we do right now. And it's about our family. I'll quote her here. "I never worried about getting old. I used to be able to lift, bail a hay, muck out a stable. I used to be able to do a lot of things. As long as I could work and take care of myself, I've been grateful, but most extremely grateful for my family." And I think the service that she's done is because she cares about not only for our family, but for other families. So thank you, Frances, for all your service. Happy 100 years birthday and 100 years of service here.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pollan. Mr. Harris, did you want to comment on this item?
Yeah, I did. First, Peter, I wanted to ask you if either of your parents met another notable around town, Cal Worthington, who was also a B-25 bomber pilot.
They may have. When I was younger, I never met him, so I'm not sure. But there were several, including my father-in-law, who passed away several years ago, but he was a B-24 pilot who was shot down over Italy and was helped across to England to escape capture during the war. So yeah, everybody in that era, the Greatest Generation, had some part in World War II. And I remember Cal Worthington as one of our wonderful people in the community.
Yeah, you know, I just want to thank you and thank your mom as part of the Greatest Generation, also for being a role model for young women who want to get into aviation, like my daughter. You know, there are opportunities now for young women in aviation that weren't there. But for your mom to be a pioneer in that field is really notable. And just tell her councilmember Harris is honored and wish her a happy birthday.
I will certainly do that and thank you. And yes, she has spoken to multiple grade schools and high schools over the years. She slowed down a little recently, but she has inspired a lot of girls to follow in her footsteps as far as I know.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I was just going to share a quick photo here of Frances. She clearly could identify each one of those planes. And not only that, but she said, you know, I got a pilot's license before I could get a driver's license. So happy birthday, Frances.
That's great. All right, we're going to move to B, our second presentation, Recognizing Latino Heritage Month. This is you again, Mr. Garrett.
Well, thank you very much. And you know, this one that I take a lot of personal, you know, pride in. You know, Latino Heritage Month was first put into public law as a month in 1988. It actually started with Latino Hispanic Heritage Day by President Nixon to recognize a lot of the contributions, particularly many of our veterans who served our country, who were of descent from different of our Latin American countries. And in 1988, it became Hispanic Heritage Month. So this resolution here to recognize Latino Heritage Month in Sacramento, we are honoring all of those who have really stepped up for our community, who have been helping during this pandemic. The Latino, the organizations like La Familia, who have been out there working in the front lines as well, making sure that we have food access to folks, to making sure that we have resources like testing and also vaccinations. But also, we're here to recognize today the Sacramento Latino Medical Association, who have been encouraging more and more the need of having a diverse set of doctors in the field. And more so have we needed it most than in this pandemic to accept this resolution. And every year we bring in those who have helped our community. But to accept this resolution here, we have one of our own local doctors and leaders here with the organization, Dr. Zuniga, who is a medical director of the California Health and Wellness and manages and manages care for Medi-Cal health plans. So Dr. Zuniga is originally from Cucuta, Colombia, and has received his master's degree in Bogota, Colombia, but has been serving here in our country and has holds an MBA from UC Davis Graduate School of Management as well. So please, let's welcome Dr. Zuniga here.
Thank you, councilmember Garrett, and thank you all the councilmembers and councilwomen. And good afternoon to all. My name is Robert Zuniga. Thank you, councilmember. I am Sacramento Area Latino Medical Association Board Member and the Vice President and Medical Director for Medi-Cal at Health Net and California Health and Wellness. We are a partisan corporation. I'm honored to accept this recognition on behalf of the Sacramento Latino Medical Association. And if I may take a couple of minutes to tell you about the organization. We were founded in 2007 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And we're a group of Latino physicians and other physicians who treat Latino patients in the Sacramento area. Our goal is to advocate for the delivery of high-quality and culturally appropriate health care to the Latino community. Our membership includes physicians from the University of California, the School of Medicine, Davis, Soter Health, Dignity Health, Kaiser and Health Net. And some of our members, including myself, serve as volunteer clinical professors for UC Davis and also for California North State College of Medicine. Our members also work to create and implement health policies that will improve health care for the Latino community. We also collaborate on supporting local activities such as Clinica de Pati, University of California Davis affiliated student run clinic that serves uninsured Latino patients. We also support the student run clinics with advocacy for their needs and for perceptual recruitment. Our members have volunteered to supervise COVID-19 immunization events throughout the city. And then we have also helped support health fairs and similar community projects. We support and advocate for the Healthy Partners Program in Sacramento County to deliver primary care to undocumented residents. And we sit on the advisory board for the program. Finally, we support Universal Healthcare Forum. And since the pandemic started, we have partnered with UC Davis and others to help communicate about COVID-19 precautions and safety and the safety of the vaccines and promoting the vaccination programs, particularly with our Spanish-speaking residents in the community. Our members also provide mentoring to college students aspiring to become health professionals. And we support the scholarship program for medical students who are doing this. Thank you again for the recognition and have a great day. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ramiro Zuniga. And you know, the work that they've been doing to dispel the myths of COVID-19, dispel the myths of the vaccines and ensure that we increase those rates. We need more members of the medical field to be not only both in culture, but in language, being able to get out there and the work that the Sacramento Latino Medical Association is also inspiring more people to join the medical field from all walks of life, not just the Latino community. And we appreciate that as well. Finally, Mr. Vice Mayor, I wanted to also, you know, put a little information. Latino Heritage Month is in the month of September because it's a time when many, many in Latin America experienced the independence from monarchs who also encompassed slavery. And so that time, whether it was Mexico, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Brazil, from monarchs at the time that were still had slavery as part of their system, the caste system. Latino Heritage Month and the independence in those timeframes sparks the beginning of democracy in the Americas and a separation and the beginning of getting support back for the indigenous people and those who have been brought over from across the continent as well. So it's a proudful day for Latinos here in Sacramento. And also thank you to all of the Latino health professionals that have been helping during this pandemic.
Okay, great. Thanks. Let's go on to our third one. This is about drought resistance. Mr. Harris, I believe this is you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. As you all know, we're in the grips of a very severe drought. And we just had a presentation at the Regional Water Authority from the Bureau of Reclamation, which was not a happy thing to receive. Unless we have very strident precipitation this winter, we're going to be faced with difficult decisions about how we use water in our region. As you may know already, the federal and state water projects have cut off water deliveries to farmers. And this is of great concern statewide. So never has water storage been more important. You'll notice on item 17 on consent is the funding of various joint powers authorities. And I have been sitting on the Sites Reservoir JPA for the last three and a half years, working to create an off-stream storage facility that would hold 1.5 million acre feet, almost as big as Folsom Reservoir. It's a great project. It's a much-needed project. How does it affect Sacramento? It could affect our water security. And we're the farm-to-fort capital, right? We need to support our farmers and the best way to do that is with water deliveries. So working with the Department of Utilities, we will look very carefully at our water storage contingency plan and may have to make decisions to move up the scale. We're at level two now. And we may have to make adjustments to that moving forward. The point being that we will see what winter rains bring. But they're going to have to be very strong to get us out of some difficult decision-making. That being said, I wanted you, my colleagues, to understand a little bit more about the Sites Reservoir because I've been working on this a long time. And so we have a video to present. And Mindy, if you could please roll that for us.
Our California farms, businesses and cities depend on a reliable, sustainable water supply. But unfortunately, over time, our water infrastructure has gotten older and stressed beyond its capabilities. Add the urgency of both climate change and the worst drought that California has seen in more than 50 years, and one thing is undeniably clear. The time for California to address our statewide water management challenges is now. Enter the Sites Reservoir. The Sites Reservoir is a once-in-a-generation, 21st century solution that will provide water to California's agriculture, urban areas and environment during dry years, creating long-term, sustainable resiliency for our entire water supply.
The Sites Reservoir is a completely new way of looking at reliable water supply in California. It's an off-stream reservoir that will be pulling water off the Sacramento River during really high flood events. It then stores the water for times when water is very scarce and it releases water back into the system for the benefits to the environment and the people of California.
For California's flashy hydrology, Sites Reservoir is like your savings account. When we have a wet year and have more water than we know what to do with, we take it and deposit it into our savings account. When rain is scarce and we're facing drought conditions, that saved-up water can be put back into the system to augment the supply. More water in the river during drought benefits downstream fisheries, farms and millions of people across the state of California. Truly a game changer for California. The Sites Reservoir, a key project in California's water resilience portfolio, provides invaluable water security.
The Sites Project Authority was formed under a joint powers agreement in 2010. Their mission is to get the project built. It really does have a diversity that is unmatched among any project that exists. And what it brings in that diversity is inclusion of all interests of California, which is really ag, urban, north, south, coastal, inland, large farms, small farms, big cities, small cities. We have now defined and described an affordable, permissible and buildable project that has local, state and federal support.
My name is Mary Wells. I'm a fifth-generation California farming family. Purchased this property and other properties down in the valley and have been farming now for 47 years here. I have been advocating sites since the 90s. It's a very bittersweet project for me. This project is not without loss. And I say that because I will be experiencing it. If Sites is built, this will, we will be standing right now in under 360 feet of water. I really care about my neighbors and the other families. Yes, we have our little corner of the world in California that we advocate for. But somebody has to stop and think about the good of all of California and particularly in ag and the importance of sustainable and reliable water.
My name is Fritz Durst. I've been farming this land for about 40 years. My family's been here since the 1800s farming. California is the largest ag-producing state in America. 2021 is a terribly dry year. This drought will cost all of California agriculture into billions of dollars. If this reservoir was normally operated right now, there'd be a million acre feet of extra water in this state to be used for everyone's benefit.
Drought is a part of California water, always has been, always will be, probably will be even more significant as we go forward with climate change in the future. One of the things that the Sites Reservoir does is it provides a flexible asset that allows for the release of the water at times when the environment needs it most. When there is not enough water in the rivers and streams, the environment, the fish habitat is affected. The fish, the salmon, the delta smelt, which are key species in the river system. And that's one of the things the Sites Reservoir provides is that freshwater source during those dry periods.
My name is Valerie Pryor, and I'm the general manager of the Zone 7 Water Agency. And we are located in the East Bay area. And we serve the communities of Dublin, Livermore, Pleasanton and parts of San Ramon. For the Zone 7 Water Agency, Sites Reservoir will be a key part of our water supply portfolio. Sites definitely moves the needle for surface storage. Sites benefits people, industry, both in urban and agricultural areas, and it benefits the environment as well, which is very important to the Bay area. This project demonstrates that it does not have to be an either-or. Here's an off-stream reservoir, so you're not damming a river, you're not ruining river habitat. And it provides a reliable source of water for people and industry, but also for the environment.
My name is Jeff Harris. I am city councilmember in Sacramento for District 3. Sites Reservoir is really a pretty elegant solution to the set of problems we're facing with climate change. This reservoir is a very important project for people all across the state. Every sector in California has a vested interest in Sites. From the Sacramento perspective, I believe that Sites Reservoir does offer us flood control benefits. We know that the flows in the Sacramento affects our ability to stay flood-safe in Sacramento. Clearly, if we divert water in major rain events from the Sacramento, store it in Sites, we'll have smaller flows down the Sacramento in these critical times. We'll be able to stay more flood-safe in Sacramento.
Sites Reservoir is a generational project that we have an opportunity to address climate change uncertainty, to ensure that we have continued reliability of the Sites Reservoir project and make sure that we can bring the very necessary water supply into our region of Southern California. The beauty of this project is it's through this coalition, this group of urban water districts, agricultural interests, northern, southern California. So it really lends itself to this multiple payers, multiple beneficiaries, and a really sustainable project long-term for the state of California.
We need to build Sites for reliability of a water supply.
For the water security for our great state.
For healthy urban communities.
We need to build Sites Reservoir for reliability for agriculture, for urban and for the environment.
Build Sites Now.
All right, well, thank you all very much for indulging me in that. You know, this is, I think, a very important project for our state. And as you can see, water agencies from Southern California to the very far north are very involved in the project. And just wanted to make you aware of the kind of varied things that councilmembers get involved in. So thank you. I appreciate your attention.
Great, thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, that is it for the presentations. Let's go ahead on the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they want to either comment on or pull on consent?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to pull 19 for discussion, please.
Okay, anything else? All right, is there a motion on items one through 18?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So Vice Mayor, I do have five hands raised in regards to making public comment. Let me check. If you are making public comment on the consent calendar, please raise your hand. And if not, please lower. I have three, two people to make comments on the consent calendar. The first is Rebecca Sandoval. Mandeeb Singh. Mandeeb Singh.
I was making a public comment on the youth funding discussion. I'm not sure if that's on the consent calendar or not.
No, that will be within the ARPA. So that would be item 22.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I have no more caller, no more hands raised.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the roll, please.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Jennings and second by Councilmember Harris. Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gera.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify item 19. I know we recently voted on a change in procedure for agenda requests, which I definitely support since those take a lot of time, both at the council meetings and in general. But I do see when I look at this item that it seems that's more expansive. And I know, City Manager, we've talked about sort of what gets included on this list and what doesn't get included on this list. So I'm hoping you can expand a little bit because some of the items on here are not agenda item requests, but they're actual like staff follow-up item requests. So could you clarify a little bit on that?
Absolutely. I'm going to have the city attorney chime in with me as well. And I think the clerk, the charter officers worked on this as a way to bring items forward to the council for consideration that have not been agendized. So for instance, from the previous meeting on our council comments and ideas, typically things would be brought forward and there's not a lot of room to have a discussion about what those items are. And so we wanted to formalize a process to bring it back to the council for their full consideration. And like you're doing, pulling the item off to talk about the specific issues if there are any questions and then having the council vote on moving forward with the items on the report. And really, it's both for clarity on the staff side and it's to manage workload issues as well just because of the prioritization of some of these things that come forward at the end of the meetings, which are very timely many times, but they are at times in conflict with some of the other priorities given to staff from previous meetings. So this is just a way to kind of clear the decks with the council and make sure that staff is working on. and make sure that staff is working on things that are important to the council.
Okay, and then in terms of timely, as you mentioned that, you know, and I know I've talked to you about, you know, one of the items on this agenda is something I requested three months ago in June. And so what should we expect in terms of like, when this would get brought back? Because we hit a little hiccup where we realized this wanted to be agendized, and there were two weeks without a council meeting. And I think if it's not an agenda item, I guess, to be more direct, my question is, is there any way to expedite if this is a staff workload question? Or cannot be something we talk about if there's something timely that arises that might need to be looked at before the next council meeting?
Well, absolutely. So if it's outside the context of a council report like this, and if it's something you're working with staff, whether it's on my, in my office, the city attorney, or the treasurer's office, if it's something that they can do pretty readily without a significant resource lift, then that would just be done. It wouldn't need to come through this process. In fact, it happens pretty frequently. But it's just that when these things rise, and we're having an item that you're talking about, potentially could require bond council and maybe even outside council. So that's why we wanted to bring it forward. And this is the first one that's come forward. So we're trying to count for all of the things that are hanging out there. It's also why you see a council follow-up log that we track every week at Agenda Review, stands how staff is prioritizing these requests.
Okay. Susanna wants to chime in. I've got some more, but I'll let her go first.
And I see the Councilmember Harris hand up as well, but yeah.
Oh, sorry, Jeff.
Following up on what the city manager said, this is an effort to actually have council action on request for the use of staff resources. Council members can recall, it's ever been done in the past, is during council comments, which is not an agendized part of the agenda, which is not something that the council can vote on or act on. That's the typical way that in the past, we've received direction from the council to work on something. So this actually presented in a way that the, that there would be a vote by the council, and then staff could move forward.
Okay. I guess, so I have a few things on this before I pass it off to my colleague, who is his hand raised. But I think for me, definitely appreciate a more clear way to track and make sure that we're all checking in on your workload. I don't want to ask you all to do 500 things when you only got time for five. I get that. I think for me, I'm a little worried if we bring up something that's timely or perhaps like opportune, you know, there's some, a grant deadline coming up or a development project that we're working on. And it's like, there's a gap in meetings like we just had, and then we have to wait three weeks or longer until we can bring it back. And wondering if there's any way we could visit some sort of contingency process if something comes up that meets some sort of threshold that we're like, okay, three council members say that they're down for this, so we're just gonna start working on it, because it's super timely, and we don't want to let this pass. So that's something that I'm concerned with. I also had an item that was listed in here that's just incorrect, that I want to correct, just for the record. And specifically, the 68 item on how and when camps can be moved of unhoused people. You know, my specific direction is I didn't want this to just be DCR. I actually really wanted PD and code to be working on this with DCR on a public-facing document, not to change the rules, but to make clear what the rules were, so that we could make it super clear to the public when camps can and cannot be moved from all three departments. So I want to make sure that that's appropriately captured. And then, yeah, like, I'm using 2700V as an example with the credit tenant leasing. You know, that was three months ago, when we found out this needed to be agendized, there was a gap, and so is there any way we could talk about a contingency plan?
Sure, so we will actually make the item reflect what your request was, so that's easy. We do also have the ability to bring an item forward that is time-sensitive. You know, you and I had a, an offline conversation about something that we're gonna lose money, or it's a public safety issue that we could bring back outside of the cycle of the normal council meetings. And that's absolutely something we can do.
Okay. And then my last question, I promise, is so, for example, on this item, when I look at the second item listed, which is Councilmember Laloe's request to bring forward the law and legislation item that we decided not to put forward. And I was part of the group that decided not to put that forward. So if I was saying, well, I don't agree that that should be put forward now, I think we should wait until the city plan. Do I ask for that to be pulled from this? Do I make my vote different? How do we nuance that in terms of how we vote on this law moving forward?
Yes, and so the, the way the report's set up, there are separate items. And if you want to pull one particular item on the report for discussion in a separate vote, absolutely. That, that's the intent of this, is to make sure that we're getting clear direction from the council on what, what we should be working on.
Okay, that is helpful. Okay, I'm gonna stop asking my questions and let Councilmember Harris go.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Jay. You know, as Howard said, this was just a mechanism to give us more clear procedures, so that we all, we don't just jam up staff with a million requests, that our council as a body may or may not want to invest those kinds of staff resources in. That was really the impetus to make it move forward. I see that most of the things listed on this chart thus far were requested before we changed our policy. So I assume that they are grandfathered and don't need, you know, don't need approval on, at this particular time for a vote. But only after we adopted the procedure change, I would think, would this apply. I appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela's question, how do we use it, right? So if there is an issue that another council member has requested, but perhaps you or I are not feeling favorable of that, yes, we can pull it for a discussion, and then we find out if the full council wants to move forward with that particular proposal and invest staff resources or council time in that particular issue. So I really appreciate your clarification on that, Katie. And then the one thing I wanted to say is, one thing I did notice missing on this matrix was my request to bring an ordinance about fireworks in years when the, when the governor has declared drought conditions. So it didn't make it onto the list, but it should for the next week. And then, you know, we will, actually, I asked for that before we changed our policy. So it should probably be grandfathered as well. But the point is, I don't know if my council colleagues think that that's a good idea, a bad idea, one that they think we should put staff energy into so that we can debate it and vote on it. That was the whole intent of, of changing this policy. I still think it's a really good idea. I know that staff is gonna find it immensely helpful. And, yeah, so hopefully that adds just a little more clarification.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Thank you so much. City manager, one suggestion, please number these items. Very difficult to reference them off the list without a numerical point of reference. And then, to that end, the items dated 5/21/19 and 5/1/19 and attributed to me as requests, one relative to the Mayor's Thousand Strong Program and the other one relative to a TOT adjustment, are both either moot or resolved and can be removed from the list at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Gera.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm just gonna repeat my, my concern from last time. I, I, I think it's good to try this new process and figure out a better management tool. But I, my, I hope we don't get into a position where we spent a big chunk of the council meeting discussing what we're going to discuss. And I think that's the, the strength of having the committee process to be able to do that. I, that's my only, you know, tale of caution. I know we're gonna learn as we move through this process. But I can see that the council gets into, you know, and maybe not this council, but maybe future councils, or as we move forward, where it gets in debate of, of whether even to bring an item up. But that's exactly why we have smaller committees to really discuss those issues. So I think this is gonna help us at least track and see kind of where staff is at. But I just, I'm, I want to keep an eye on how that, how that works its way out.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up to what Eric said. You know, another piece of this is that as we make requests of staff, we can always make requests to send it to a committee. For instance, my request for that, for the fireworks ordinance would be to direct it to Longledge, right? I, I'm not looking to bring it to council for consideration. I'm looking for staff to take it to Longledge. But I also, through this process, want the council to say, yeah, that's, that's something we should consider. Let's send it to Longledge. So if it passed on consent, that's where it would go. So it is part of the process.
Okay, so we have item 19. Is there a motion?
Can I clarify what a motion on this means, Vice Mayor? So there's the log of the previous items. So we're voting on the three new items that are listed in this, Howard, are we?
Correct. And so that would... Right, the three new items, my, the point in bringing the old list on here...
Howard, you're, Howard, you may want to turn on...
Other than at our general meetings.
Howard, you may want to turn off your video.
You're starting to slow us down on your talk, yeah. We're losing audio. Okay, so, and, and per Jess' point, so we're voting again on the items that were, like, a 68, I voted, asked for the credit tenant leasing. So our vote today means that staff would keep working on the credit tenant leasing thing, and that we bring back the two items that Councilmember Laloe asked for.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm just trying to make sure it's super clear, so...
So Councilmember Valenzuela, the, the other log that's on there, it's one that you see, your staff sees every Wednesday. I just wanted to bring it forward so that the council sees the things that we're working on and how we're prioritizing those. But going forward, you will only see an item if there are requests from a previous meeting. So there potentially will not even be an item next week if there are no requests this week.
Well, I actually love having the full list here. It's just helpful, like, at Longledge, we have the full list come forward, and it's just there, so that we can kind of see. And if we have questions, we can ask them. So, okay, so as a member of Longledge, if, if I, and with all due respect to my colleague from District 2, if I think that second item should wait on the cannabis ordinance until the citywide study, would I be making a motion to approve the first and third item, but not the second item at this time?
What you would do, Councilmember Valenzuela, is that maybe your motion would say, with respect to item number two, let's call it, that should go to Longledge, and then just see if the council would agree with you. A majority of the council agrees with you on that item.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this, if I can? And Susanna, tell me if this is okay. But let me make a recommendation, because I know Mr. Laloe wants to move forward on this. We'll see where the council is. If you want to move items 1 and 3, let's go ahead and vote on that. And then Mr. Laloe can move item 2. Susanna, does that work?
Sure, that's fine. And then just the council member.
Let's, let's go ahead and do it that way.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and move item 1 and 3 for approval. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, and Mr. Laloe, do you need to speak on this? Or do you want to wait and then move your, your item?
Well, I'm questioning, are we, are we discussing to remove item, my...
No, we're gonna just do, we're gonna take that item separately.
May I ask why we're taking that position when we have three items, one belonging to one council member, and two to another council member that they find it very important to be brought back to the council?
The reason that we're taking them separately is because there's a motion to do that. And, and so we're not, we're not saying, going and saying no to...
Should I introduce a motion not to do that?
You can do a substitute motion if you like.
Yeah, so I'd like to do a substitute motion of not removing item 2, which is 8/24/21, and having go to the vote through the rest of the council.
Okay, so your substitute motion is to move the item as put forward by the staff?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, is there, is there a second?
Yeah, second. So what I hear him saying is a motion to move all three items forward. And I'm seconding that motion.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to call the roll on the substitute motion?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
No.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
No.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent.
Okay, so that motion carries. So we are done with the consent calendar. Let's go ahead to item 21. I'm sorry, item 20. Let's try to dispense with this one in less than 45 minutes, if we can.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Greg Samlin, Planning Director with Community Development Department. Today, we're asking the council to waive the 180-day wait period so Carson Anderson can begin working as a retired Newton. Carson was the city's preservation director, and he retired in May of this year. We have a need to bring Carson back to complete work related to historic preservation grants that are under specific time schedules. Carson has a unique background and skill set necessary to complete these three grants. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
There's a motion, Vice Mayor Chenier.
Okay, let's have a motion by Mr. Jennings, second. I'll go ahead and second. Please call the roll. I assume there's no public comment on this?
I have no hands raised to speak on this item. Will you read, who made the second?
I did.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chenier, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent, but joining us right now.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead to item 22, ARP. City manager, who's doing the presentation on this?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting, Vice Mayor. This was the mayor's item. We had the, are you taking the other?
Hi.
Okay, there he is.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the city council. I want to do, be on for this item, just because it is, they're all important items. I know that this is an especially important item on our agenda this week and this year. As you recall, several weeks ago, I had the privilege to present to you and to the public a proposed American Rescue Plan Act framework and funding priorities. And in our meeting several weeks ago, I heard a lot of feedback, mostly support for the concepts and the categories laid out, but some specific recommendations about how the proposed plan might be amended. And today's action and accompanying letter, I hope, is responsive to what you presented and what we heard from the community. Just to review very, very briefly, of course, the overall proposal was $112 million broken out over two years. And we divided it, I proposed that we divided it into several categories, small business and commercial corridor revitalization, with a significant emphasis on what, what I call clean and safe, what you call clean and safe, the TCR's clean and safe, for all of our corridors. In addition to some specific targeted investments towards the corridors that they all need attention, but really need extra attention. We also put forward, that was $29 million, put forward $19 million, including $12 million from the ARP for youth workforce training and gang prevention, including a variety of the strategies that we are already employing, but to add to them, to invest $41 million in the implementation of our comprehensive homeless strategy. That $41 million combined with other state and federal resources we are receiving will allow us to put $100 million on the table as we continue very productive conversations with our county partners to endeavor to get thousands of people off the streets and into a better place. Also suggested $10 million for our emerging and vital creative economy with a focus on diversity. And then, of course, we set aside, suggested that we set aside $20 million plus an additional $5 million borrowed from our housing trust fund so that we could, as I say in the letter, value our city employees and address organizations. as I say in the letter, value our city employees and address organizational needs. And so, the framework is received positively, but there were some, as I said, good suggestions. And so today's proposal seeks to make the following changes. And I hope that we might have a discussion, of course, and a, and a vote today so that we can begin to get this money out. Or suggest that instead of five million dollars to go generically in a competitive way to a variety of other commercial corridors, that instead we take five million dollars and we set it aside specifically for the North Gate Boulevard Commercial Corridor. Our Councilmember Harris and the community have been vocal for a long time, and rightfully so, that this boulevard, a crucial part of our city, deserves focused attention. And I guess I've always come, I've always believed, and I think this is consistent, that if we can't do everything in one, in one effort, it's better to focus in a couple of areas and do it well than spread the money out too thin among too many, too many areas and not have an impact. And so the five million to North Gate Boulevard is consistent with that. And of course, the five million dollars towards Del Paso Boulevard in North Sacramento remains. Five million dollars to Old Sacramento and the downtown, additional money remains as well. I also suggest that we put additional five hundred thousand dollars for childcare services, bringing the overall total to one-point-five million. I mean, childcare, I don't even need to make the argument. The way working men and women, mostly women, you know, to go back to work and have that opportunity, what childcare is, is absolutely core, and even one-point-five million isn't enough, but it shows, I, I think, a further important commitment. An additional five hundred thousand dollars for our local food banks, I mean, food, again, in addition to Councilmember Vang's work, setting up the task force and the million dollars that can go toward that, is five hundred thousand dollars to be able to help our food banks directly, and we know that they need every bit of it and more. I also, um, am responding positively to the press by two council members, I believe it, Vang and Shenier, Vice Mayor Shenier, that the city manager of us track and report all youth-related expenditures across all funding categories, so we can clearly identify our youth investments. It's important, you know, how we track this money, and not only account for it on the front end, but, but demonstrate the outcomes is crucial. An additional three hundred thousand dollars for the Center for Workers' Rights, Councilmember Valenzuela and others, I know Fabrizio Sasso testified before us, and, and that's important, that we continue this, this vital work on behalf of working men and women in Sacramento. And then, of course, the racial equity issue, and I know that this, we, we have both a, a long-term imperative, but also a, a near-term obligation to make sure that we are, in fact, applying a racial equity lens to, to everything we do here. And so the way that I sort of look at this, is we have established the ad hoc committee. I asked that Councilmember Vang co-chair this with me, she can actually have the gavel. But that we work together, and my Chief of Staff, Kelly Rivas, i- i- in the lead as well, together with Councilmembers Geta and Vice Mayor Shenier, the racial equity ad hoc will help ensure that we'll oversee our ARP expenditures to ensure that we are focusing on racial equity as the, the categorical allocations become specific allegations for programs and providers. The ad hoc will also work to develop a racial equity workshop for the full city council so that everybody, of course, can participate in this crucial work, and then will be the public reporting body as we go forward with our very important contract with Race Forward to establish a longer-term and a more permanent way to evaluate and assess racial equity for everything that we do, whether it be budget, ordinance, law, practice, et cetera. And so, that's, those are the suggested changes here. And I, again, I think we've, you know, gotten pretty good at this, through CARES and now through the ARP. The council, I said this before, I just want to add this because it's so important to me, we are redefining the core priorities of our city, we're not replacing the core priorities, we're not saying no more public safety, that's not what we're saying. Or no more basic services, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that will always be core and fundamental. But we are saying forevermore, when this city does budgets, when the city, when this city has opportunities to invest one-time monies, that our core priorities include the community, include our neighborhoods, include our disadvantaged community, include workforce, include youth, include small business, include affordable housing and homelessness, include the creative economy. That's what's significant about this, and I, I'm really, and it builds upon CARES, it builds upon Measure U. And it will continue our momentum going forward. I do want to say that there will be a lot of individual decisions to be made, and I know our staff will, like they do with CARES, make significant recommendations to us on all these fronts. I do hope and believe that we're going to be able to cover a lot of ground and territory here. I know I want to see, I generally don't have favorites, but I do think it is important to point out that there are some signature initiatives that we need to continue to pay attention to, whether it's the California Mobility Center, whether it's the Ivy Square Project, whether it is the Opportunity Center through La Familia. We have to find a way to help seed the, at least the beginnings of the design phase with real money so that that vital dream can become a reality. The same thing with the innovative cooking technology center that we want to build, some call it the Walk Center, which was a key piece of our response, of, of the, of the work we did to pass the electrification laws. That we need to be on the forefront of developing the alternative technologies for our restaurateurs, our diverse restaurateurs, so that we are helping make sure that electrification is a success, not only for our climate, but for our economy and our workforce as well. And so this is very, very exciting, and it's a great, great opportunity, and it may not be done, depending on what happens in Washington DC with Joe Manchin and the infrastructure bills, we're all following that very, very closely, I, I hope and believe that there will be tens of millions of dollars more for our city to be able to invest in, in these similar categories. So I just wanted to get online for a few moments here and present this because it's really an important part of our, our work together this year. Thank you to all of you, thank you to the community, thank you to the city staff, and I hope we can go forward here today. Great, all right, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have twenty people that would, are signed up to speak on this item.
Aye.
The first is Haley Washington.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, my name is Haley Washington and I live in District Three. I'm calling today on behalf of SAC Kids First Coalition and the Youth Action Committee. We should, would like to make the following recommendations on how you will be investing a portion of the American Rescue Plan funds on children and youth. So we would like to create a separate category for the children and youth investments and place all of the child's and youth-related investments into that category so that we will be able to clearly identify where the youth investments are going. And we would also like to provide an analysis of the investments based on a social and racial equity perspective, because not knowing where the money is going for youth and like how much is spent on youth is not enough. And the last one is increasing city infrastructure for youth investments to create a coherent youth strategy. We at SAC Kids First look forward to working with you so that the city is investing in youth and in the most intentional, strategic, and equitable manner, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Alpha Bruton. Alpha Bruton?
Yes, I need to unmute myself. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, my name is Alpha Bruton, and I work, live and work in District Six. I'm calling in today on behalf of the SAC Kids First Coalition and the Sedgernu True African Heritage Museum, where I am the research and development consultant. I would like to make the following recommendations, that Haley just repeated, so I'm not going to repeat them, but to create a separate category for children and youth investments and place all of the child and youth-related investments in that category. Also provide an analysis of the investments based on social and racial equity perspectives. And lastly, increase city infrastructure for youth investments, grant-making, and research planning to create a coherent and youth strategy. And also to continue to have the dialogue and create a toolkit on racial equity issues that apply to youth programming in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Michael Alt.
Mayor's Members Council, Michael Alt with Downtown Partnership, really appreciate your time today. We really do want to acknowledge the leadership with the mayor and also Vice Mayor Shenier for the work in doing outreach with the community. Clearly, a critical time for businesses in this region, and we do applaud the entire council for your dedication to ensuring the city has the best possible strategy for the application of these resources. I think as we look towards recovery, we clearly appreciate the continued thoughtfulness to prioritize this investment in Sacramento's business community. We feel that dedicating these funding to our small business will drive the revitalization in our core, our business community, our commercial corridors, are the backbone of the local economy. From a downtown perspective, we can tell you we've seen over a two-hundred percent drop in pedestrian traffic in the last eighteen months, and these funds will be critical to bringing that energy back. The threat of closure to a lot of our businesses is real. Employees are beginning to return back to work, and we need to do everything we can to make sure the environment is clean, safe, and welcome. We're encouraged by this proposal, we think the framework will help us to not only identify ways to support businesses, but our cultural amenities and creative opportunities in this city, and specifically in the downtown core in Old Sacramento. We look forward to partnering with you to keep this economic engine of this city intact and appreciate the thoughtfulness in this process, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Brandon Black.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy with the Sacramento Metro Chamber. I'll keep my comments brief today, Mayor, quickly, we hope that you are feeling better, recovering well. I'm calling to share our strong support of the mayor's proposal to allocate nearly thirty million dollars ARP funding directly to the business community. This much-needed support will go a long way in helping ensuring economic resiliency as we continue to wade through the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Your support for this proposal is yet another step in the right.
Hey Mama, how are you?
Thank you again for your time this afternoon, we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Sacramento to support local businesses, thanks again.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Monica Aleha. Monica Aleha?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members, my name is Monica Aleha. I'm the Community Impact Director for the American Heart Association in Sacramento. I work with and hear from community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, health systems, and other members of our community. And I work with them to tackle health disparities, barriers driven by social determinants of health, and establish sustainable practices to promote overall health and well-being, which includes nutrition insecurity and healthy food access. The COVID-nineteen pandemic has exacerbated a problem that has long existed in the city of Sacramento. Too many local families have insufficient access to healthy food. Without access to affordable, healthy food, a nutritious diet, and good health are out of reach. And as a result, that, diet-related diseases, especially among children, are on the rise. The Food Justice Task Force will work to address this problem by ensuring healthy food is accessible to all Sacramento residents. This task force will use an equity-first approach to help build a resilient food system through community capacity building and support for Black, Lepinecks, Southeast Asian, and Indigenous farmers and local healthy food retailers. To more effectively leverage this work, we ask the city council to consider increasing its investment in the Food Justice Task Force to one percent of its ARPA funds per year for three years, or three-point-three-six million dollars between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-four. The AHJ applauds the city's efforts to ensure all Sacramento residents have access to healthy foods they need. Your commitment to a strong, sustainable program can improve our family's health and quality of life, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Brenda Ruiz.
Hello?
Brenda Ruiz?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Great, this is Brenda Ruiz from the Sacramento Food Policy Council. Wow, those comments from the first youth speaker were amazing, and we're blessed to have her living in Sacramento. I'm calling requesting three percent for food, for the Food Justice Task Force and food insecurity. We respectfully request this minimum investment, which is scarcely enough to address the, one of the most urgent needs for Sacramentoans. I offer these observations on the one million dollars proposed for the Food Justice Task Force and the half a million for food insecurity. Number one, the one million recommendation is only point-eight-nine percent of the ARPA funds. We're asking for at least triple that. Worse yet, the half million dollars for food insecurity is only point-four-four percent. Investing a sustainable, resilient food system must bear priority for the city, not just food events. A sustainable and resilient, equitable food system is vital to our regional identity as America's farm-to-fort capital. We fully support the memorandum from Councilmember Vang and Vice Mayor Shenier recommending prioritization of food focused on young children and youth. Let's make Sacramento America's farm to every fort capital by investing in the food system today for a more just, equitable, and healthy tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Mike Jaskey.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members, my name is Mike Jaskey, representing the overall SAC Act organization, not just the Homeless and Housing Committee that I usually speak for. I'm a member of Councilmember Garra's District Six. SAC Act leaves in a quite different set of priorities than proposed by the mayor in his original allocations and the details therein, or even the revised version posted with today's agenda. First, while SAC Act supports a substantial use of ARPA funds for the twenty-twenty-one siting plan for homeless people, we don't agree that this ARPA allocation process should postpone affordable housing until the mid-year review. According to SHRA, there are only four affordable housing projects awaiting funding in the city, and these total only four-hundred-and-sixty units. The city should immediately provide the needed funding to get these four identified projects committed and launched, and create a plan to encourage developers to step up with more projects. SAC Act needs, excuse me, Sacramento needs its own rental housing support program that is not explicitly linked to COVID-nineteen pandemic. There were and are plenty of reasons for city residents to require help due to a wide range of causes. Funds should be allocated on an ongoing, for an ongoing rental assistance program to prevent evictions with their tragic consequences. Sacramento needs an expanded violence prevention program. Only two positions are devoted to this purpose in the Department of Community Response, the need is much greater. Finally, the Office of Community Response within DCR, which is taking over the non-police response to mental health and other crises, should develop, should develop one or more youth-oriented teams with the specific expertise needed to deal with youth in crisis. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker is Johann Cardenas.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can, please proceed.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Johan Cardenas, and I live in District Seven. I'm calling in today on behalf of the SAC Kids First Coalition and Public Health Advocates, but also as a young man of color who grew up in Sacramento. We would like to make the following recommendations as you determine how you will be investing a portion of the American Rescue Plan Funds on children and youth. First, we ask that you create a separate category for the children and youth investments and place all the child and youth-related investments in that category, so that we will be able to clearly identify where the youth investments are going. We also ask that you provide an analysis of the investments based on the social and racial equity perspective. Knowing how much money we spend on youth is not enough. We need to know which neighborhoods are being served and where there are gaps in investments. We also ask that you increase city infrastructure for youth investments, especially grant-making and research, to create a better youth strategy. The more intentional we are about supporting the infrastructure for youth funding, the better the city can support and serve youth over the long term. We also look forward to working with you and help create more opportunities for youth in Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jason Weiner. Jason Weiner?
Apologies, I needed to unmute. Hi, my name is Jason Weiner. I'm a resident of District Six and part of a team at Sacramento Act with Mike Jaskey that's been discussing community needs and evaluating proposals for ARPA funds in the city and the county. I urge the council to allocate funding and support community-based organizations to best meet some extremely urgent community needs, specifically responding to the dire need for housing through, as Mike discussed, the providing expanded resources for those facing eviction, a locally-funded rental assistance program, and increasing housing supply, like converting hotels, building units, and providing matching funds for affordable projects. Additionally, community-based violence prevention and intervention services are urgently needed. And third, youth mental health and crisis response through investing in the Department of Community Response, nonprofits in schools, and proposals like the Peer Counselor Project mentioned in the memo from council members here and Vang. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Monica Roelis. Mayors?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Monica, and I'm the coordinator for the SAC Kids First Coalition. I was actually born and raised in Medevue, but I currently reside in District Four. I'm calling on behalf of our 35 partner organizations to first thank you for including funding for children and youth in your proposal. And I want to bring special attention to the amendments that you made, Mayor, in your most recent proposal. So amendment number four, which was the request that SAC Kids First brought to your attention to track and report out all youth-related expenditures, I definitely want to emphasize that we included racial equity in our request because we understand that it's not enough to just let constituents and the public know how much money you're spending on youth, but it's very necessary for us to see where those dollars are actually being invested, in which communities are in the most need. So thank you for that amendment, but I definitely think that we should stress the racial equity and social equity portion in that part. The next part I wanted to include was the $7 million that you stated in your proposal would be coming from the state of California, not necessarily the ARP funds, that are going to go for youth workforce development. We truly believe that a major percentage of those dollars should be invested in community-based organizations. Now, perhaps that's a separate conversation that we're going to begin having, but we definitely want to see those dollars go to our CBOs and our nonprofits, who are already well-positioned to support youth of colors in the neighborhoods they serve. So thank you again for including youth funding, but we do urge you to think beyond these one-time funds and make good on your promise to secure a long-term, stable funding stream for kids. We look forward to working with you and continuing these conversations. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Emily Bayme Michaels.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on behalf of Midtown Association. I'm Emily with the Midtown Association, as outlined, Executive Director. We represent 110 blocks in the central city. We're calling again in support of the framework that you've outlined for the ARP funds. We really acknowledge the leadership that our mayor, our vice mayor, and our council members have had in ensuring these funds go to the highest area of priority related to economic recovery. As you know, we are hearing consistently that our small business community was one of the hardest hit by the pandemic, and are some of the, some of the ones that are most impacted, make our city so vibrant, including our restaurants and entertainment venues. We really hope that we see in the long run these funds going towards targeted marketing campaigns, as discussed, things like robust gift card reimbursement programs, and are so appreciative of the work that you've done to stand up the Alfresco Program, and appreciate the intention to continue to invest in that direction. We're also hopeful that funds are invested in infrastructure that makes it simpler and more efficient to bring more events and programming to our city and urban core. Basic facilities in the public space that can create a comfortable experience for visitors, visitors and employees, such as restrooms, better lighting, and streetscape improvements are so important. And lastly, to be successful, funds should continue to be dedicated to resources that establish and maintain a baseline of services that encourage and promote a clean and safe environment. Since the pandemic, our organization has seen an increase in safety-related calls by over 65% since 2017. And as a reminder, our tax assessment funds only increased by 3%. We really need your help in ensuring that all programs are going in the same direction to, to meet that service need. Thank you again for the work that you're all doing and the incredible leadership that is on all of your shoulders. We really appreciate the support.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Rebecca Sandoval.
Hello?
Rebecca Sandoval?
Yes. Hello, I'm Rebecca Sandoval. I'm trustee for Area Three, Twin Rivers Unified School District. I'm calling about the amendment to the Northgate Boulevard Economic Recovery Plan. And I see that partners are to include the Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association, Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. And I am here to recommend that there be a representative from Twin Rivers School District as well, and from South Natomas United. My reason for asking for that is I see that the effort's going to be led by Councilman Harris, and the school district has not been notified of proposals that have been developed, have been proposed for development along Northgate Boulevard. There are two elementary schools and one charter school along that Boulevard. And I think it's very important that they have some input because all of this will impact our schools. In addition, South Natomas United is on the other end of Northgate Boulevard. GNNA is on one end, and I think we need to work together and have a collaborative effort when things are being proposed for Northgate Boulevard, so we are not left in the dark and just find out that things have been proposed. I also see that when we talk about racial equity, we need to remember this community of Northgate Gardenland has been very marginalized. A lot of Latino families here, they've been here forever, and they have to be definitely considered when we talk about racial equity. Thank you for your time and all of your effort.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Eric Ho.
Hello. Good afternoon, City Council Chamber. I am Eric Ho, current president of the Sacramento Nels Association. SNA came about during the pandemic to assist Nels salon owners with up-to-date information on regulations and new requirements that were put in place to safely operate the business. We worked with the state board to help suggest what was needed to safely allow salons to reopen. We also became the resource for our members for learning and understanding about relief funds that were available. Our volunteers were able to provide webinars together with SVDC and translate their programs in language. ARPA funds can help SNA with stronger outreach to help those that otherwise would be left to fail. Language and cultural barriers limit our community access to loans and programs that are available. With proper funding, we will be able to provide technical support, marketing, education, and pivot these businesses during the pandemic. Not just show people the resources that are available, but also to provide in-language how-to guides for people that need guidance. SNA is a community of small business owners and workers with about 150-plus members and growing. We came together to uplift and support each other during the pandemic. Together, most of our businesses have survived. With funding, we can help these businesses thrive and stay part of the community. Together with our passionate leaders of the NorCal Vietnamese Chamber and support from the city, we are confident that we can make a noticeable impact. We don't need a lot. We just want to be included. Our Asian community needs to be included and not left out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Joni Titherington.
Good afternoon, esteemed council members, Mayor. I hope you're healing quickly. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Joni Titherington here, Oak Park Farmers Market. Thank you, esteemed council members and mayor. I hope you're healing well and fast. I'm here to talk about food access. California produces nearly half of the nation's fruits and vegetables, yet one in five Californians, that's about 8 million, currently struggle with food insecurity. Food insecurity is the occasional or constant lack of access to the food people need to maintain a healthy lifestyle. And many of these folks that struggle are children. So as we speak to, I support the mission. However, I'd like to recommend some amendments in regards to the food access. $1 million recommendation, again, is only 0.89% of the total. Food is not a privilege, it's a right, and folks have a right to have access to food. So the $500,000 funding for the food insecurity is only 0.44% of the total budget. I'm making a recommendation of $3.6 million to the duration of the funding, so the two-year funding access. Also, I think this will add to the sustainability and equity within the food system, and we can now name ourselves America's Farm to Every Fork Capital. Furthermore, Farmers Market supports small businesses. The Oak Park Farmers Market supports 37 small businesses.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
So there's a contribution to small business and our economic system within the city of Sacramento. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Elgyro Okoro.
Hello, my name is Adra Okoro. I am the Policy Director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance. And again, we would like to really look at the city of Sacramento and really prioritize making investments in new regulated affordable housing. Investments in shelter without an even larger commitment to build this new safe, accessible, and affordable homes will not achieve our goal of addressing homelessness in Sacramento. Sacramento Housing Alliance urges the mayor and councils to make an immediate $50 million investment in the development of new affordable and permanent supportive housing in addition to the investments in the comprehensive siding plan. We appreciate Mayor Steinberg's recognition that funding for affordable housing is important by including it in this proposal to invest in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in February 2022 with a mid-year budget. However, the city must act now with the funds that are currently available to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is GNNA Board.
Hi, this is Margreya Sala, and I'm with GNNA. Good afternoon. I want to first thank the mayor for amending your framework to include Northgate and to receive the $5 million of the ARP monies, and also in particular Councilman Harris for your unattarring advocacy and support for Gardenland Northgate, and all the council members who spoke up in support of Northgate a few weeks ago. We're very appreciative. However, and I'm not trying to nitpick, I did notice that under the Sacramento Business and Commercial Corridor investment, that Del Paso, Oak Park, and Medevue were mentioned but not Northgate. And I asked that we also need in small business investment, and I asked that they be included in that. I also want to stress the importance of keeping Gardenland Northgate as you consider additional fundings in the following areas: vaccination and outreach. Gardenland has a vaccination rate lower than 30%. We're actively involved in organizing pop-up clinics, but more is needed. We also have an average rental of $1,700 in Northgate, Gardenland, but the average income is $30,000 a year. So we're in desperate need of affordable housing. Prior to COVID, Gardenland Northgate had a high unemployment rate. Now, our unemployment rate is even greater, and we need specific workforce development programs targeting our area. We also need increased investment in our youth and gain prevention for Gardenland. We do need that desperately, in particular Gardenland. And before the pandemic, affordable childcare was a problem, and now the challenge is even greater, and we need, Gardenland Northgate needs an investment of childcare facility for our working families. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrew Avila.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Andrew Avila. I live in District Five. I'm calling on behalf of Sacramento Kids First Coalition and on behalf of Improve Year Tomorrow. First, I want to thank the mayor and city council for their, you know, focus on youth-related expenditures and priorities. And I want to thank the mayor for making the request in his memo for a separate category of youth-related expenditures and adding on strong racial equity language. I do align my comments with those who spoke prior to me regarding SAC Kids First and their priorities, one being the separate category for youth and child investments, so we can accurately track where the funds are being spent, provide an analysis through a racial equity lens, perspective, so we know how these funds are impacting our communities, and increasing city infrastructure for youth investments and workforce development. So thank you for the time and the opportunity to make comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ben Azey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of WellSpace Health, and thank you for your leadership at this critical time for the city of Sacramento, particularly around the social determinants of health, which we know have such a tremendous impact on individuals beyond their care in an exam room, but making sure that they live healthy and happy lives. One partnership that we have been particularly proud of, working with the city of Sacramento, has been our work together around what can only be described as the behavioral health crisis in the city of Sacramento that has been absolutely worsened by the pandemic. And we're thankful for your support of the Substance Use, Respite, and Engagement Program, which I can only describe if you think of Detox as the front door to treatment, Sure is the front porch in front of Detox. It is a place that voluntarily welcomes people who are acutely intoxicated on alcohol, drugs, including methamphetamine. And when they come in, it gives them a time to rest and allows us to have conversations with them about their path forward and their care. And the program's been incredibly successful. It's innovative, and it's been successful. This spring, we saw 20% of the people that came in, we were able to refer into substance use treatment services, 22% when you look at patients who are on methamphetamine. And those are folks who are not necessarily seeking out care, but were just seeking out a place to rest. But once we were able to have those therapeutic conversations, we're able to really make progress. And we thank you for that commitment, and we hope you will continue that commitment through your funding in the city homeless and housing commitment. We think Sure is a vital part of the city's crisis response and look forward to working with you and staff, law enforcement, social services, and all those who are trying to address the behavioral health crisis in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tracy Schall.
Mayor Steinberg and members of city council, this is Tracy Schall with the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative. On behalf of the 16 organizations who make up the SAC IEDC, I would like to thank you for recognizing the importance of continuing assisting our small business owners throughout the aging corridors, as well as our minority small business owners who have benefited greatly from the in-language, culturally-appropriate, technical assistance that the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative has provided. These small business owners benefit greatly from having access to this type of lifting themselves up, and we will be able and we will be able to continue to help them navigate the pandemic with even more success. Without healthy businesses, these areas will continue to fall behind, and we must do all that we can to ensure that these small business owners are given the opportunity to level the playing field. Through the recommended three point five million dollar investment, the SAC IEDC will be able to continue to do just that, making a difference for these small business owners in their adjacent communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Frank Louie. Frank Louie.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Okay. All right. My name is Frank Louie, and I am the Executive Director for the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We appreciate mayor and council, the efforts to continually funding our SAC IEDC. We are an organization of over sixteen P-bids chambers, and collaboratively, we've been able to come together and really help our small businesses in their time of need. Certainly, there's been a lot of ongoing challenges, especially on our aging corridors. Stockton Boulevard has been hit significantly because a lot of our business owners in the Little Side Town district have been very, it's been a very challenging climate during this pandemic, and they're just still not able to, you know, see light at the end of the tunnel. So I just continue to lobby and appreciate the ongoing support. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. I'm so proud of you, Mayor Steinberg, for standing up there like that, wishing you all the best. Daniel Savala, the Executive Director for the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership. Again, calling in today because, you know, when I came into this position a little more than six months ago, right in the middle of the pandemic, had it not been for the SAC IEDC, many of our business owners on Del Paso Boulevard would have received little to no help. And that's because the P-bids, as you know, citywide are boots on the ground, actually doing the work and building relationships proactively with our business owners. And it's through this collaboration with our city and our P-bids that we can get folks who need the most help, the help they actually need in real time some days. Looking forward to seeing this move forward. Del Paso Boulevard, five million dollars, thinking of so many things that we can do with them. Infrastructure needs all along Del Paso Boulevard, facade improvements. As you know, Del Paso Boulevard maintains public art and infrastructure that has outlived its current MOU. We'd like to see that readdressed. Happy to see and asking the mayor and council to continue to support the arts, the Latino Economic Council, and our friends and neighbors on Northgate Boulevard. Love to see them have a P-bid also moving forward. So thank you. Want to enjoy, just say one last time, thank you all for your help in this endeavor. And hoping you guys will vote yes on this proposal. Thank you all again.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Julie Rotten.
Good afternoon. This is Julie Rotten, Executive Director at Stanford Settlement Neighborhood Center. We're a private nonprofit social service agency serving residents of all ages in the north area of Sacramento. I'm calling today to specifically voice our support for the five million dollar set aside to focus on Northgate Boulevard. We're grateful that Northgate can receive this investment and the resources it deserves. Excuse me. Many experience Northgate Boulevard as a way to get somewhere else, but for those who live and work in Gardenland Northgate, it's a destination. It's home to four and five generations of Sacramento families, and the family-owned restaurants and small businesses along the Northgate Corridor reflect the rich diversity of this community. Neighbors have been pursuing meaningful investments in Northgate Boulevard for many years, and your financial commitment today is essential to that movement. We can't wait to see what's ahead for Northgate. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, and to all of you for prioritizing Northgate Boulevard.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Suzanne Lander.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Suzanne Lander, and I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action Sacramento. I am very grateful to the city's Office of Violence Prevention for the small grants the city has provided to community organizations as well as their one point five million funding for our partner, Advanced Peace, to help curb the surge of gun violence that's been ongoing since the onset of the pandemic. Unfortunately, gun violence continues to rise, and more substantial long-term funding is needed for gun violence intervention. Community-based organizations need to have sustainable funding, and they should not have to compete for a small pool of funds. Solving the issue of gun violence is a long-term commitment, and it takes time to build the community's trust. We are asking the city to deepen its investment in violence intervention and request that ARP funding and other resources be leveraged for long-term sustainable intervention work. Thank you for all you have done for violence prevention and continue to do for our community.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Phil Tretheway.
Thank you, council members and mayor. Glad to see you talk with us today, Mr. Mayor. My name is Phil Tretheway. I have the honor of serving as President of the Board of Directors for the Capitol Creative Alliance. Thank you for your leadership on the proposed American Rescue Plan Act Framework Funding for Priorities, specifically your ongoing support of the creative arts and economy. A healthy creative economy has the power to elevate our region's economic prosperity and quality of life. While the events of the last year have weighed heavily on all Sacramentoans, the Capitol Creative Alliance is committed to serving a diverse and equitable voice for creatives throughout the greater Sacramento region. Your ten million dollar investment in the creative community will serve as a transformative opportunity to build capacity and stability for creatives across our city, allowing for powerful, dynamic voices to contribute as we build back better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mandip Singh.
Hi, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council, for giving me this time to speak. Appreciate you all very much. My name is Mandip Singh, and I'm calling from District One. I'm a community organizer with the Jakarta Movement. We're the largest youth organizing group for Punjabi sex in the state of California, and we're a proud member of the SAC Kids First Coalition, who I am calling on behalf of today. It should obviously go without saying that, you know, if we don't invest in our young people now, we will all have to spend more later. And as we know, youth is not a homogenous group, and the reasons behind that disconnection vary greatly, depending on various factors, right? However, one thing's pretty clear, that we all lose when we don't invest in our people, when we under-invest in our young people. How do we know that we are investing the right amount, right? How do we know that we are under-investing, right? How do we know which youths are getting which funding? How do we know which dollars are reaching those who actually need it and not those who already have other resources available to them? If we don't even know the exact number of the dollars going to the youths, because the youth funding currently, as it is, is grouped with other categories, and we're not tracking exact youth funding and analyzing and researching how these investments are turning out for the youth, then, like, you know, it all kind of just gets lost in the fog. And they're like, there's no clarity there then. So I am imploring the council, please, please, separate the youth category from the other categories and commit to researching and planning for youth strategies, so we can actually begin to see, you know, where, how our investments are actually stacking up, right? I would call us back to, you know, when Sacramento was a leader in the nation with redefining public safety as not always a reactionary policy, right? So a lot of the things that are currently in youth funding are reactionary policies. So we want to talk about prevention.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, please, please. Racial equity is huge in this. Neighborhoods, class equity is huge in this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Annette Emery, and we have four more speakers on this item.
Hello, this is Annette Emery. I'm with the Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association. I just want to thank Mayor Steinberg and Councilmember Harris for getting the recognition of the Northgate Corridor as needing funds. As I need to echo what Mr. Savala said, Northgate does not have a P-bid. And I need to also echo what Ms. Rotan says. We are a shortcut between downtown and north to Thomas. The pandemic hit our small businesses hard. Cars are used to just rushing up and down and not stopping and seeing what is here. There's really was no way for businesses to become curbside or have pop-up dining. So any money we could get to start really re-visualizing what Northgate can be and how to help all those small businesses. We have very long-time residents and long-time businesses. And we are, we could, we could really be a vital and vibrant part of Sacramento and not just a shortcut with just that extra bit of attention. So thank you so much. GNNA is looking forward to start really getting ideas from everybody about what we can do to utilize the funding correctly. And just really want to appreciate that Northgate was recognized, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is a phone caller. Last four digits is four, three, six, six.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Yes, this is Lambert of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I wanted to let Mayor Steinberg know that our prayers in Del Paso Heights, where he's very popular, are with him and his health. Now, to tonight's discussion, it's a wonderful division of funding. I hope that while they're talking about Del Paso Boulevard, Mr. LaLolli continues to mention Marysville Corridor, because that was a very vibrant corridor when I was growing up there in the sixties and seventies. I can name many things that youth were involved in just on Marysville Boulevard. The other thing I want to mention is the California Black Chamber of Commerce. They did a wonderful job during the holidays last year with many businesses that Mr. J. King showed true leadership for. Had it not been for him and the California Black Chamber of Commerce, I don't believe we would have received any funding. So that's tremendous leadership there. I also wanted to say congratulations to My Vang. I heard that she was going to handle the gavel at the ad hoc regarding racial equity. You need somebody in there like that with fresh ideas that's very aware of institutionalizing systemic racism. And I want to end by saying that, Mr. LaLolli, your staff got back to me. They're a wonderful staff. It's nothing in the way for us to brainstorm now. Our cheesecakes went viral during Labor Day and last week, and we're ready to hire a lot of people out of Del Paso Heights. A lot of grand alumnis are very talented people. And you cannot make a cheesecake with a computer. There's no way. You need people. So hopefully, people will be getting back to me about funding.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Get well soon, mayor.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kao Saifan.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Kao Saifan, Deputy Director with the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. I'm speaking today in support of the mayor's proposal and to share how important the funding for small business and commercial corridor revitalization, and specifically to the three point five million for the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative. This funding increases the bandwidth for P-bids by Stockton Boulevard Partnership to help small businesses like Mobeta Finger Food, a minority women-owned business that was at risk for shutdown. So I appreciate your time and appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker on this item is Samuel Kinsey.
Yes, how you doing? I'm Samuel Kinsey. I'm the community liaison for the California Black Chamber of Commerce. Want to say thank you to the council and the mayor for providing this plan to help marginalized communities. I also want to give my condolences to you, mayor. I'm glad you're feeling better. We would love to continue to partner with the Asian Chamber to support and provide aid to marginalized communities. We have partnered with the Asian Chamber before, but we continue to be a resource, a big resource for marginalized communities. We have our radio station ninety-seven point five, KDEE, here as well to provide outreach as well. And we continue to strive for excellence in this great city of Sacramento. I wanted to say thank you for your efforts, and we continue to help and support marginalized communities.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to thank all of the public for speaking. We have a number of council members who wish to speak. I just wanted to put a couple things on the table quickly before we get to all of my colleagues and ask Councilmember Vang to respond as well. So you all, we have two documents before us. We have the mayor's letter, which has gone through a number of iterations, mostly prior to the last meeting and then since the last meeting as well. I think you're doing a really good job of incorporating the comments from this council. And that is something that we've all had lots of opportunity to look at and also get a lot of public feedback on, which I think has primarily been positive, and I hope we move forward with that today as well. The second document is a memo that Councilmember Vang and I put forward that is really around youth issues, mostly around process of how we can build more capacity within the city and what we are doing and how we're doing it to give our young people a better chance of success. I don't know that the public's had a lot of time to look at that. We turned that in a few days ago. So what I want to propose is, as we move through the mayor's letter, that we also provide direction to the city manager around the memo from Councilmember Vang and myself to go through that memo, come back to us with a report of what he can do and what the city can do immediately, and especially on a lot of the process things, and what things may be more challenging or may need more resources as we go forward. So we've gotten a lot of good feedback, I know the council member and I have, from this, particularly from youth organizations. I don't want to just have all of the work that she and I and our wonderful staffs did to get the memo to where it is. So, but I also want to give the city and the city manager an opportunity to take a hard look at it, to really dive into it, and then come back to us with, again, recommendations. A lot of what's in there actually reflects what we heard from Assistant City Manager Jasso in the report on CARES. There's a lot of just process things that we can do better, which I think should be no brainers. But then some things may be a little bit more difficult. So I would hope we could provide that additional direction from whoever's making the motion on the mayor's piece to come back to that and have the city manager come back to council with those recommendations or comments. And Councilmember Vang, I would just ask to see if that works for you as well. I know how much time and effort you've put into this as well.
Yeah, thanks, Vice Mayor. I think that's a solid direction. I do think the process piece is really important, because I know staff has worked incredibly hard during, when we were allocating the CARES dollar. But as we move forward on our ARPA dollar, it's going to be really important to make sure we have the infrastructure and staff capacity to ensure that we can pivot in a way to ensure that these dollars are actually reaching our most vulnerable communities. I think in the memo that we sent out, we also laid out kind of some ask around, I mean, this is for City Manager Chan, around having an external facing dashboard. There are other items as well, but I do think definitely want to make time for staff to digest it and City Manager, for you to be able to report back on what are some low-hanging fruits where we can actually just move forward and implement, and some that may need to take some more time. But I think that's a great direction, Vice Mayor, on that piece in particular.
Thanks. So let's go to the council, have Mr. Harris, Ms. Valenzuela, Mr. Vera as a starting point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, mayor, I have to thank you personally and very deeply for understanding the need of the Northgate Corridor. You know, I've done a lot of research on investment in various corridors in the city, and it keeps coming back that Northgate has received almost no money over two and a half decades. So your recognition of that, I think, is very significant. And I can tell you, having had a community meeting about the possibility of this kind of investment, that the community in Gardenland's Northgate is very, very happy about this. It's given them a source of hope, and it has energized them to think about what they would like to do to uplift their own community. We will be having several And we will be having several meetings about proposals, ideas, wish lists. It's really significant and I, I again, thank you very much for your recognition of that. Additionally, you know, when we spoke last, I, I asked for more money for food banks and you've acknowledged that as well. We really are going to have a number of Afghan refugees come into our community in the very near future. And our food banks need to be bolstered. Of course, we have food insecurity amongst many of our communities. So this is nothing but good. Uh, uh, you know, I know how much work, Mayor, you've put into this plan and how much thought you've put into it, how much feedback you've gotten from council members. So I would like to go ahead and make the motion to accept the, uh, the framework for the ARPA funds. And also, uh, number two, the implementation going to city staff. I think that whenever we have money to spend, there's always too many things that need money and we can't satisfy all of them. I think that you, Mayor, have reached a really good balance here. And I am okay definitely adding direction to take a look at the memo from, uh, Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Chenier and put that in the manager's office and see what can be achieved. You know, performance metrics are an essential piece when we look at spending these kind of one time funds. We really need to know what we've achieved. And I, you know, I appreciate where they're going with it. As far as an extra category for, for youth spending, I'm not sure that that's necessary, but I'll leave that piece up to the city manager to figure out the specifics. And, um, again, Mayor, thank you. And I really have been thinking about you and wish you a very speedy recovery.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo my appreciation for the mayor's updated memo, the increased funding for food access, for childcare, for work, uh, workers, the call out of funding for Northgate. Um, and then move to track youth funding separately. I really think we're in a good place and I'm excited to be supporting this. But I do think a critical question that I've gotten in the last few days is really how this will work within the buckets. You know, how are we going to prioritize funding to make sure we're supporting, favoring support for small businesses, for things that are pursuing racial equity, for things that are creating high road jobs? Um, and in general, how are we making sure this money is going to go where it's needed the most? Um, so I'd like to propose, I'd like to second Councilmember Harris's motion with a little bit of additional direction, if he's open to it. Just, um, that we add in, in addition to approving the spending categories and the direction that Vice Commissioner and Councilmember Vang to come back on their youth memo, which I also support, is direction to staff to try to prioritize small businesses, high road job creation and racial equity and the distribution of the dollars and to be tracking that data and information as well. Um, so if you're okay with that, uh, Councilmember Harris, I'm happy to, to second your motion. It's not meant to be binding in any sort of way, just to give staff some general, these are some priorities and to make sure we're tracking that data too.
So, um, Councilmember Valenzuela, yeah, I'm a big supporter of small business and I love prioritizing that. I think the direction that you're asking for is kind of organic in terms of when we move forward with deciding how to actually spend these dollars. You know, we have categories here, as the mayor would say, big buckets. There are many, um, many decisions that we will be facing within each category about how to prioritize spending amongst all of them. I think we have a really strong prioritization of small business investment and race and equity. Um, you know, considerations with all of the spending. But your, your direction is, is, I guess, to my mind somewhat generic, but absolutely spot on. So I do accept it.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's all I have, Vice Mayor. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Gera.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate that, Mr. Vice Mayor. And first, let me also, you know, give some accolades here to both, uh, the mayor and my council member colleague Jeff Harris for your staunch advocacy for Northgate, uh, uh, community. I greatly appreciate and, and, uh, until they opened up a superior down in the South area, the superior that I appreciated and frequent. And the fact that you were able to have some vaccination clinics, uh, this weekend there. I think some of the comments, uh, that were brought up from the community talk about the great need, uh, in, uh, in that area and in the greater Latino community. You know, earlier we, we had a resolution about Latino Heritage Month. And so it's great to see that, you know, both, uh, you know, we're looking at racial equity as, as part of our, um, uh, funding. This, uh, this ARPA funding, uh, both the North SAC, Northgate community, all significant areas of our city that have a large diversity. Uh, but a very significant large number of Latinos in that area with issues of, uh, of, uh, the need for job creation, high wage job creation. Uh, and, uh, and also support for the small businesses. Um, Mayor, you brought up a couple of points here about making sure we get these projects going that'll support those communities. The Opportunity Center over on Franklin and, uh, from La Familia, uh, some of the Waka Kitchen, uh, in the Little Saigon corridor. Uh, and even, uh, things that are outlined like the Mobility Center here. But a lot of those projects, um, you know, we're still getting guidance from the federal government on what, what money can be used for that. And it makes it difficult for some of these organizations to piece together what can be spent and where. Uh, so, um, you know, um, to my colleague, Councilmember Harris, I'd like to support your motion, but with some direction here. Uh, and that is to, uh, ask that staff work with the mayor's office, um, from, in our economic development department to piece out how, as guidance comes down from the federal level, what pots of money can be used for executing some of these projects. There's going to be an RFP process for a lot of these, but some of these require different, um, different pots of money. Uh, one of the areas of concern in today's, um, you know, New York Times, uh, there's a huge concern that the Biden's one trillion million, one trillion dollar infrastructure bill will not have enough, uh, uh, trained workers or even small businesses that come from minority communities to be able to take advantage of that, that money. And so, um, I think one of the key things that in the respect to higher road jobs and, and job creation, we got to make sure that we get these incubators, that we get these support entities off the ground. So, uh, the direction, uh, Councilmember Harris, if we can add to it, is that we work with our economic, economic development department, the mayor's office, uh, and, uh, and find out how we piece together some of these more complex projects.
So, uh, Councilmember Gera, I think, I think it goes without saying that we all, uh, need to understand the constraints of the federal money, uh, how, how it can be managed and what projects can be supported with it. So, um, I mean, I'm happy to add that direction, but I think it's really built into the motion itself. We have to understand these, uh, restrictions before we can allocate the funds. But, uh, you know, the direction then would be to the city manager to as soon as possible make clear how this money can actually be used. And I know that your staff, Howard, has been working on this and will probably come back with directives rather soon about ways we can use the money. We do have federal direction already, but I think we need to distill it through the city government, through your office for all the council districts to understand how these funds could actually be used. For instance, the five million dollars for Northgate, we are certainly uncertain about what projects this money could be applied to. So we will await, uh, your, your direction before we start plowing projects into the mill. Because we don't want to, you know, spend a lot of energy on things that can't be funded. Does that work for you, Eric?
Yeah, and as long as they're working with the community organizations so that we're, we're, uh, one, building the, the pathway per se. And that way we're ready to capture other potential future dollars. I think that's the, the key here too. Uh, one example is on the, the childcare, um, one adding the half a million, greatly appreciate that. But now the state has added the largest contribution the state's ever made and even the feds in childcare. But they have much more flexible, um, dollars. And there's even a concern that communities won't be ready to use the money and the money will be sitting. So being able to better identify how to do that and have a path forward, I think is important. So, uh, Councilmember Harris, back to that point, as long as the city manager is working with, say, like the Latino Economic Council or the, uh, the, uh, the Waka Innovation Partners with SMUD, uh, so that we, we can part, uh, help provide the expertise to put a path forward for those projects.
So Howard, do you have any response for that?
I do, and I was going to wait till after the council member, but I, I actually have a comment and a clarification, uh, that I was thinking the Vice Mayor about. But the comment really is that following the adoption of this framework, there's going to be a series of, um, agreements that come back to this council for approval. But even in advance of that, we don't have a final, uh, rule yet from the feds on what is eligible and what's not, to Councilmember Gera's point. And so we just want to make sure that whatever we end up, uh, doing and prioritizing, it meets those eligibility requirements, which, uh, chief of which is a public procurement process. So we're working with, uh, the city attorney's office, uh, city auditor's office, coming up with this framework, much like we did with the CRF funding. Uh, but you know, the, the clarification piece here, and it's been said throughout this entire item here, is this discussion on a racial equity lens. So I want to make sure I understand that, you know, prior to us releasing any of these dollars, uh, this ad hoc led by the mayor and Councilmember Vang will provide some criteria by which we can screen and focus these investments. Or are we saying that we're going to wait for the broader work that council's doing on racial equity? Um, before, you know, because there's some things, uh, under ARPA that are very straightforward that deal with COVID, COVID response, uh, outreach, vaccinations, those things, uh, will not get challenged. There's some things in the gray areas that we need to really, uh, staff needs to get direction on how we want to apply, um, a lens to this hundred and twelve million dollars. Is it three items, uh, in, in advance of the race forward work? Is it, uh, so I'm looking for some direction. This is a similar conversations, uh, conversation we've had in the past. And that, that would really help us because I've heard from public comments from this council and lots of staff asking, what does that mean? And so, and how does that apply to these, uh, these funds as we put them out?
I think that's a great, as, as the person who added that in, I just wanted to chime in here. I think it's a great idea maybe for Councilmember Vang and the mayor, if they're up for, to provide some initial guidance. I don't think this was something I was imagining would wait until the full work was done, because obviously that's going to take a lot of time and engagement. But I think my hope was that we would start trying, we would start tracking it. And then, um, as we, it would hopefully inform our bigger work moving forward, but just as sort of general loose parameter. But I like the idea of Councilmember Vang and the mayor's, um, ad hoc helping out with that if they're down to accept the challenge.
True.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. That way we could, uh, begin to kind of screen through the different types of investments with that lens. We just need it, uh, to be defined for us.
The manager might need to interject here for a second, just really quick. You need Susanna to weigh in because I believe, and I only am just remembering this from having written them, that first of all, our good governance rules weigh in on ad hocks. And second of all, there's a weigh in on whether or not a segment of the council can make a decision for the full council. I believe whatever they would put in place would need to come back to the full council for input vote prior to you being able to use it, even as guidance for your decisions. Otherwise, I believe we would be in violation of our own good governance policies, but I will punt to Susanna on that issue. But I, I would just caution you where I hear you going right now, sounds to me, uh, like a violation of our own ethics.
No, it would absolutely come back to the council. This is, uh, something needs to be developed for us so that we can use as a screening tool. And then the council absolutely has to approve that tool.
So this brings a concern to mind up, which is that we need to disperse this money as soon as possible as well. And time is of the essence. Um, you know, there are many aspects of this funding that can be dispersed that really don't specifically relate to a racial equity lens. You know, there are certain projects that I think are indisputable in need, uh, you know, like dispersal of, of, of money for food to people in need. It's, it's really not something that needs to be stalled and yet the need is immediate. So please, Mr. Manager, understand that time is of the essence for the things that are not at all controversial. Uh, and, um, I just wanted to toss that in.
We, we absolutely have some of those items that are, uh, going to be teed up, coming back to this council in the, in the next few weeks.
Mr. City Manager, but back to the original question, you don't oppose or object to working with, uh, particular organizations on this pathway to identifying what sources of funding can be used to accomplish these projects?
Provided it does not interfere with the procurement process, because we would not be working with entities, uh, that would, um, bid on these.
Of course.
As well. But no, no, I don't have any objections to that at all.
Good, thank you. Uh, so Councilmember Harris, that's my direction. I think that helps also with, uh, with, uh, having our community understand how these pots of money are, uh, what they're eligible for and how can they, they can be distributed.
Okay, so if, if Councilmember Vang and, and the mayor could have that done by seven PM tonight, I think. Councilmember Vang, you're up.
Yeah, um, let me, okay, I had several thoughts, but now that we're talking about the racial equity, so let me just pause real quick. First, uh, Mayor, I hope you're feeling better. Um, and I want to say thank you to you and your team for your hard work to update the proposal. Um, again, I also just want to thank all the residents, community leaders, advocates that called in today, uh, to make your voice heard. Uh, Mayor, again, just thank you so much for, uh, making food dresses an agenda for our city and adding the additional five hundred thousand dollars to ensure we support our food banks and community organizations on the ground that is actually doing the food distribution. So really appreciate your leadership on that. Um, I, you know, in terms of, um, the racial equity, in terms of ARPA, you know, I see ARPA as funds. Um, that's really our critical down payment on an equitable recovery and really redesigning our communities, um, uh, redesigning our communities, uh, to work, to work for everyone. Um, I know in the next few weeks and months, our city will be working with the community to develop a racial equity resolution uh, through a series of community led workshop. Uh, and that will actually result in our racial equity resolution that's going to guide us on how we move forward. Ideally, ideally in a perfect world, uh, we should actually, as a governing body, define what equity means first as a governing body. You know, define what our equity targets are for ARPA before we actually take this vote. Um, but I recognize that there is a sense of urgency from our council to get our ARPA dollars out. Um, and want to acknowledge that, um, we're going to have to work in parallel, right? Um, because we need to get these dollars out, but we also want to move forward with the intention. Um, and I just want to make clear, because the mayor did announce the ad hoc, that my understanding as that, um, the racial equity ad hoc is one, we're going to be working on an upcoming racial equity workshop for council, because I think it's really important to make sure that as a council, we have a shared definition and vision, because what, what I think equity is could mean different from my colleagues, right? And making sure that we start on the same page. Um, and then I, what I'm also understanding that this ad hoc is going to work closely with Race Forward Gear in our community to really work on that, those community led workshop. But what I'm also hearing from the mayor now, because Mayor, you just gave us this task, um, is that we will also provide some kind of oversight. Um, and as Vice Mayor Chenier said, I'm not going to be able to do that by seven PM tonight. Uh, but do, I do, I hear you, a city manager. I do think it's important that we, as a council, provide some direction. And, uh, maybe in that ad hoc, we can begin to, I know that Ami has a racial equity tool, but I think that there are some metrics out there that we could be using right now in this moment as we move forward on, um, allocation of these funds. I hear, uh, Mayor Proton Ashby on making sure that we're, um, you know, within the legal realm. So want to make sure that we circle back to the full council on that. So you have my commitment. Um, I don't think I can done be, it can be done tonight, but I think that this ad hoc should, uh, bring back to council for a full conversation, hopefully soon on just some kind of framework so that we can move forward. Because I will say, um, everything we vote on should come from a racial equity lens. There is no item that we should vote on that does not include that, even if it comes to food. Because we know that even within food insecurity, it is our most marginalized community that is bearing the brunt of even, of even food insecurity. And so just want to make sure that we're very intentional, but I also recognize the urgency of getting these dollars out to our community. So we will have to work in parallel and you have my commitment. Mayor, I'm looking at you. Um, I know you're still recovering from COVID, but we will have to work with city, city staff to provide direction. So Howard, um, you have my commitment on that, um, to provide that feedback back to the full council. Um, the other piece I wanted to share, but Vice Mayor already mentioned, this is really directional memo, so I'm not going to talk about that because Vice Mayor already mentioned what we're going to do with that. Um, but the last piece I, um, wanted to just center is really around our, our youth. I, I think I heard from all of you already and you have the commitment from the mayor. He, he put it, uh, in a statement that we have to create really, um, uh, uh, independent kind of children and youth focused area designated for the ARPA funds. And so I hear that commit from him from, I hear that commitment from him, uh, for those who called in. And, uh, definitely want to make sure as the city is moving forward, we do that so that you can see those dollars. But I also understand that just showing those dollars is not enough. We have to make sure that those dollars are actually touching our most vulnerable youth. Um, and then lastly, the capacity piece, which was also in the memo that Vice Mayor Chenier and I wrote. But, you know, for us to move forward, that city capacity is going to be really important around workforce. And so really hoping, uh, that the city will move forward with that. I do have one, um, amendment, um, that I like to make to your motion, Councilmember Harris. And, um, this is really a reflection from me reviewing our care for our outcome report, uh, that was sent to us by staff. Um, on the last page of the report, it was noted that we spent around eighty thousand plus, probably close to a hundred thousand, uh, in stipend based outreach program that really leveraged seventy three trusted community org- Probably close to a hundred thousand in stipend based outreach program that really leveraged seventy three trusted community organization and messenger. To deliver our key messaging, right? So during COVID, during the cares, we rely heavily on our community partners. To be able to really get the information out about these dollars. And perhaps city manager, this is already part of your twenty million of how you're going to plan to allocate allocate the fund. But I know that it was incredibly helpful for staff as a new council member when I came in and was being debriefed. On on the execution of cares dollar, it was something that was really helpful to staff. I know we ran, we ran some digital, social media, ethnic radio, outdoor transit, print advertisement in multiple languages. But we actually had set aside funds to do this work. And I want to make sure that we, as we move forward with ARPA, that we actually continue to have dedicated funding. For outreach stipends in addition to mark marketing and communication. I think that's really critical because even if we get these dollars out as a city, we have a responsibility. To also make sure that we are doing everything we can to work with our trusted messenger. And that includes oftentimes stipend to support the work that they're doing. And so I don't know if it's a hundred thousand, I'm going to amend and say a hundred thousand because that's what we spent during cares. And even with the ARPA funds, it's doubled that. It's it's well, it's more than the cares dollar. And so I just want to make sure that we set aside funding and how this might already been be in your agenda already as you think about staff capacity. But wanted to make sure that that was included in the budget as well for the ARPA, for the ARPA funds to support staff.
Yes, it absolutely is. It's part of the infrastructure we need to put in place to administer these funds. So yes.
Okay, that's great. Then I don't need to make a motion just on record. Glad to hear that you're going to make that commitment to set aside some funds for for the outreach campaign for the ARPA dollar. So really appreciate that. And that's it. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Councilmember Chenier. So just a couple of things, city manager. I think I can support the motion on the table, but I would like to just say a couple of things about it. First of all, as to Councilmember Chenier and Councilmember Vang's memo. I I can support it being sent to staff as I heard Councilmember Chenier say at the beginning of this. But I'm I have a lot of questions about it, so I'd like to just lay out a couple of them so that when you come back, you can answer those. I don't really have any issue with the youth piece. But they spend the first half of that memo laying out a procedure and guidelines. For how city staff could potentially move forward. For example, they identify maybe a portal, one portal, everything goes through one port. I think that that is premature, given that we don't have the guidelines yet, which is something that Councilmember Harris talked about. That obviously in his motion, there is the the notion that we have to adhere to those federal guidelines once they're available to us. And so I just want to make sure that the memo, which is well meaning. Isn't approved prior to us having those federal guidelines and therefore doesn't. Acknowledge whatever things are placed out there. I don't want to overburden our staff by placing. Some rules or expectations on them before we're even working from the framework that the federal government has provided. That being said, the general idea there of gathering data and being performance based is all very good. And something that we should be doing and and singling out youth is also very good. So the overarching concept, yes, but into the detailed weeds, I I have concerns. So I'll be interested to hear city manager and city attorney, how you weigh in on that. I would like to thank the mayor as well. Mayor, you're getting good at putting together these buckets. Have a lot of experience now. Unfortunately, this pandemic brought you several opportunities to to hone this skill. But I want to thank you specifically also for for hearing the people of North Gate. And Councilmember Harris does a great job of representing them. I said this last time, I think they're one of the strongest neighborhood associations in the city for advocacy for their own issues. And they do not have a P bid, which is something we talked about last time. And I want to make sure always that they are included as best they can be. They are my neighbor as well, and it's a it's an area where people from my district spend a lot of time. It's adjacent. And so they are ever so deserving. So thank you. I'm glad that you increased childcare allocations. That's really important, especially to. The parents of people who have just really been hit hard by this pandemic. I'm glad that we are focused on workers and youth. That seems like a good idea. I love Councilmember Vang's work here on food equity, which builds mayor off of your food equity programs and the good work of Julia Burrows. I am happy to see digital equity included and I am thrilled to help with the vaccination outreach component, which is still included as well. I would also like to say that the additional ask that Councilmember Valenzuela made. Of making sure that there are data overlays for this as we move forward. I think is important and I do think what she said was broad, but I'd like to be a little bit more specific. And just ask that as you look at that city manager and your team. That when we're making these decisions, that we look at the implementation of these dollars citywide. Meaning, are we spending the dollars across the whole region? That way we can make sure that we don't unintentionally leave one corner or one area out. Everybody, everybody is hurting from the pandemic. So let's make sure that we help all the various communities across the city of Sacramento. And so I would very much like to see, it's traditional for us to, to make sure that spending happens in each council district and each of those communities. I'd like that to be included as part of the data component as well. And then lastly, it's the last issue for me. I love partners. We heard a lot of great ones on the call today. We cannot do this without partner agencies helping us with implementation. I think they'll be a critical part, maybe eighty percent of what we do here will run through partners. But I want to also keep just be mindful, all of us, that we don't use so many intermediaries. That we lose control of where these dollars are being spent and that we pass off that authority to those intermediaries. One thing that we saw worked very well was this council, you all took quick action to put a million dollars out before we had anybody helping us. To make sure that businesses could directly apply for those dollars. And that worked well. And then when we got more money, we did it again. And I don't want to create an intermediate, an intermediary system. That makes some of those businesses, particularly the small businesses in areas like Midtown and. And commercial corridors all around our city feel like they are disconnected and they therefore don't apply. So I'd like to make sure we keep and maintain that component in addition to the good work we're doing with all of those partner entities that are going to help us reach. So many people. So that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you, you know, for for joining us. I know folks are saying they're glad you're feeling better. I know you're actually not feeling a whole lot better, but you're just sort of sucking it up here to be with us. Thank you for doing that. And we all know how much you love your city.
Councilmember Bank and then the mayor to finish us, finish us up.
Thanks. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem for her comments and just wanted to provide that. The memo in particular for the direction is really to work with the city manager on. Because there are some things like the general things that we can probably implement. But I definitely hear you on making sure that we don't implement something that's not within kind of federal restrictions. But the memo is meant to be a little bit more broad, just to provide direction, right? Like the external facing dashboard, so we have something in real time of how we're spending these dollars. And so really just want to say, just wanted to provide that clarity on that piece. And then, yeah, that that's the only thing I wanted to mention because I wanted to make sure because we did send it a little last minute. So I definitely want my colleagues to be able to digest it and there are probably some additional questions that y'all may have. But it was really just to provide direction to city staff.
Okay, Mayor, you want to finish this up and then we will go ahead and vote.
Well, I just want to, first of all, I want to respond to the question of racial equity in the process and the ad hoc, if I might. Again, this is not perfect in part because we are rightfully engaged in an intensive, long term process to develop. A and racial equity lens that will serve us for through any and all. Issues and budgets that come before us for many, many years to come. And it's a lot of work to get it right because as we know, it's a culture change internally and it's a culture change externally. And yet, at the same time, when you have a hundred and twelve million dollars, we can't wait for that. For 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 that process to end before applying something. So what do we do? We are going to, I'll talk to Councilmember Vang, of course. I think what we ought to do is hold an ad hoc meeting over the next couple of weeks, frankly, no no later than that. And we ought to get the guidance from our consultants, from Ami Barnes, from the rest of our city team. To provide us with some existing tools, some some basic tools that reflect. The direction that is, by the way, underlies the entire plan in the first place. And this is the underlying overall philosophy here is that we are going to define, as I said before. As core priority in our city, investing directly in our communities, especially our disadvantaged communities around racial equity. And so what we have to do over the next couple of weeks is take what we know. And to be able to then recommend it to you, the city council. To bring that forward to the city council so that it becomes the temporary lens, if you will. For how we invest these these resources. We'll do that. We can do it. And we know enough to be able to do that, even if it is not the completed work. So I just want to conclude by saying thank you to my the community, but thank you to my colleagues. Guys are all. Y'all leave with your hearts and you just care about people. And it makes me proud. This process makes me proud. To serve with you and to be the mayor of this community because there are so many other ways to do this, right? We could, we could have other priorities, frankly. And instead, we consistently say. That investing in people, investing in our communities, investing in our kids, investing in our small businesses. Addressing this homeless crisis and housing crisis is is what we're about. And it is what we're about. It makes me really proud. And so let's go forward here today, big step. And and then we will get the money out with fidelity to racial equity and. All of other other important principles. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Luloi?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Hi.
Councilmember Gara?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. None, nothing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ma'am, sorry, just if I might, I just point out, first, I don't know what you call it, personal privilege. I I and I would ordinarily wait till council ideas and questions, but I think I'm going to get off the. Off the Zoom here as I'm fading a little bit, but I did have something that I wanted to say in council ideas and questions, and if it's okay. I'd like to just take two minutes and do it now. All right?
All right, the clock is ticking.
Okay, yes, go ahead. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor. Today is the fourteenth of September. And I know that it's still hot outside, but winter is coming. And I wanted to reengage the council at the beginning of a discussion about respite centers. For our unsheltered population as winter is approaching. Because I'd rather have this conversation not this week over the next couple of weeks than in December and January. Our staff and our members are hard at work. Implementing the comprehensive siding plan and there's a lot of good news to report. I hope that it'll be reported over the next. Days and weeks. I know it will be. We're in the midst of developing a comprehensive matrix that will show you the. Status of each of the sites and including timeframe. We're going to have some significant wins, including the win today. Congratulations, Vice Mayor, on the W X Shelter. As we're doing all that, knowing that it's going to, you know, continue to take some time, we'll have some wins by the winter. I don't want to forget the obligation to open as many overnight and daytime respite centers. So we get people out of the cold. We have to do this. And you know, last time we 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 got started a little bit, I mean, Councilmember Gara opened. Selling on Lemon Hill and Councilmember Valenzuela, of course, with with the library Galleria. And I know Bridget Dean has got her hands full with so many different things and is relying in part on us to identify places. Well, a couple of things. One is. I think we ought to free bridge it up myself to identify what she thinks is appropriate to open and then. Bring it to the council, period. So that respectfully to all of you and all of us. We're not kind of fencing her off and standing in the way. Secondly. We must call on the private sector here as well. How many closed warehouse buildings, office buildings, restaurants are there? It could be used for respite during the wintertime. And then with some of our existing projects and facilities, even with project Home Key, for example, and Room Key. How many lobbies are available, even when we have people living currently in. In rooms, thank God, but how many lobbies would be available or common areas to bring people in overnight? I'm really worried about this because this council passed a resolution in February that said we were no longer going to follow temperature criteria. And we have shifted our focus, understandably so to this comprehensive siding plan. Obviously, I believe very much in it, but we have to be able to do both at once. By the way, the the shame of all of it is that it can't just fall on the city itself, right? As we're talking to our accounting partners about collaborative funding and comprehensive plan together. This respite must be part of it as well. We have to bring people out of the cold during the wintertime. And so I wanted to raise it on September fourteenth, not on December the fourteenth, so that we begin the wheel spinning. I'm going to continue to raise this, maybe agendize it, but I want us to develop a plan and a and a strategy and open as many places as we can. As winter is approaching. Thank you for the.
Thank you. All right, we're we're going to go to our last item tonight on electrification. I know the mayor's leaving. I actually have to leave as well. We have a community tour at the new shelter that the mayor was just mentioning. So I'm going to turn this over to the Mayor Pro Tem to take you all through the last issue.
Thanks, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Have a good night. Mayor, get some rest. We're all sending you our best. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. This is Jennifer Venema, your climate action lead, and I'm here to provide the update for item twenty one. We've got just about a seven minute presentation and I will work to keep this very brief for you all. So you should be able to see my slides. So as noted, Jennifer Venema, I'm here with Matt Hurdle, our long range planning manager and the team in the community development department. And we're here today reporting back as requested by council on June first. Council requested us to come back and discuss how we would approach a strategy for existing building electrification. So just to be clear, we are not presenting a strategy today. We're just discussing the approach to be responsive to that council discussion. So to recap, on June first, city council adopted a framework that established the pillars for this approach. Framework for existing building electrification, directing staff to accelerate efforts to create a plan. To transition buildings from gas. This framework prioritizes equity as a key goal. It's identified as attachment to in the staff report. To look at how to do this without creating additional cost burden or displacement. Which means recognizing existing contexts like the housing cost burden on many of our residents, especially renters, as shown in this figure. Getting gas out of buildings is also a key G H G reducing strategy. And it's an important health and equity issue as well, especially for our children. Burning gas increases the likelihood of childhood asthma and results in other health impacts as well. So this is also about economic opportunity and the jobs that can come with electrification. As discussed the last time that we were here talking electrification with the council. A number of related efforts are underway. First off, we're preparing for implementation of the new building electrification ordinance. Which includes convening a technical panel. And the application period for the panel just opened today, and here's a link to the website. We'll keep council updated as this progresses. Secondly, we're looking at onsite water reuse as discussed with the council previously. And we'll be coming back with an update next year. We've also been collaborating with stakeholders in the city's clean and green workforce series. And we'll keep engaging to identify job opportunities. But the real focus is the next step for how we're moving ahead on the existing building electrification strategy. So the outcome of the effort over the next year will be a policy document for council to take action on. By the end of twenty twenty two, before the new building electrification ordinance goes into effect. The summer staff evaluated planning considerations and we prepared a work plan. We also met with stakeholders for input on approach. For the work plan, we developed a two-phase process that's outlined in attachment three. A solicitation is underway for consultant support to prepare the strategy and to help with outreach. We've also worked closely with SMUD and PG&E, and both utilities are strong partners in the process and here with us today. The work plan starts with technical analysis and outreach. This means we'll have to dig into the process with stakeholders, with the consultants. We know generally what's available, but here you can see the number of homes in Sacramento. Darker areas indicate newer housing stock. This is a starting point, but now we're bringing the consultants on board to really dig in and evaluate it, to look at costs and feasibility and impact. We've also met with the Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee to discuss approach. Committee members provided a number of recommendations, which are included as attachment four. These focus on continued and comprehensive community engagement and rethinking traditional incentive models. One member also served on the city's selection committee for vetting consultant proposals. We really want to acknowledge and thank the committee for their participation and engagement and guidance. We look forward to continuing to work with them. Here's an example of framework which we look to build on and vet with stakeholders, which really demonstrates the concept of basing an approach on equity to determine what types of actions are appropriate. Councilmember Valenzuela also convened a stakeholder meeting this summer to bring together a range of perspectives and help identify issues to address in the strategy. The key takeaway from the meeting was the need for an iterative process with multiple touchpoints and opportunities for input. We will use this initial feedback to start developing the process. Participants included those from environmental organizations, business organizations, chambers, builders, pipe fitters, chefs, our utility partners, and more. And here's a sample of just some of the issues we touched on. One example especially are concerns for ethnic and minority-owned businesses, especially for restaurants. We have a more extensive summary in attachment five. So to recap, here's the status and the outline of the draft work plan, which is attached in the staff report, attachment three. And there's further details, including dates. And this is the strategy and the approach we'll use to actually complete the analysis, prepare the strategy, and bring it back to council by the end of next year for action. So we will work on this with the consultant team to generate data and move ahead. And we'll be asking for your assistance throughout this process to recommend stakeholders, and to the extent there's interest, to help us to convene them for discussions as well. So today, this is again the recap, and for next steps, what we'll address in the policy document are some of the issues identified here on the right. What sectors to address, cost benefit of strategies, what types and timings of programs and standards we should implement, and really direction from the council about how far the city should go in terms of defining our role and identifying funding. Lastly, there's also issues that are likely better addressed at the state level rather than the local level, which we can identify in the strategy. So to conclude, we welcome any initial feedback on this update and approach. As we prepare the strategy, city staff have a number of report backs to council, and we'll be vetting to confirm the approach is actionable and reflective of council priorities. Next month, we come back to discuss the city's broader climate action strategy. So this concludes our presentation, and I'm here with Matt Hurdle and our partners from SMUD and PG&E for any questions. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. I see, uh, three members of the public who have raised their hands, maybe four, and a couple of council members. Let's start with the public. Madam Clerk, would you help us out there?
Thank you. Our first speaker is Frank Louie.
There, Frank, go ahead.
Frank Louie, if you'll unmute.
Frank, we can't hear you, so if you're talking, we're going to need you to unmute, try again.
How's that?
There you go. Go for it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby. My name is Frank Louie. I represent the Stock Boulevard P-Bid. We have the largest API restaurants in the Sacramento region. This electrification ordinance has both, uh, economic and cultural impact in our commercial core. We have both qualified experts and operators available to serve on your committee. I know that the, the deadline's coming in October third is the deadline, but our ask is to have a, a representative or two representative to serve on your advisory committee. Uh, because of the, the ordinance, it really directly impacts a lot of our API restaurants, and it's been real difficult for us to really, uh, uh, get the information available for our restaurants to pivot from the natural gas to, you know, electric. So it's imperative that we have a seat at the table, and thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thanks, Frank. We will ask our staff to reach out to you to follow up. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Next speaker is Erin Teague.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Erin Teague, on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors. As members of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change, we look forward to the continued conversation about how we can work with stakeholders to find effective and equitable solutions to electrify our existing residential buildings. As these policies are created, we request that you make sure all to consider any additional costs that would burden homeowners and further prevent access to housing in Sacramento. Since we know that cost to fully electrify homes in the city of Sacramento can cost anywhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars for homeowners. We look forward to working together and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin. Thanks for being on the commission and helping us out. Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Next speaker is Kevin McCarty.
Hi. Thank you, councilmembers. And I just wanted to say, we appreciate the, uh, the intent of the ordinance. Just want to bring up one aspect is that, uh, the city's building electrification ordinance does not currently mention or exempt technologies such as combined heat and power, uh, CHP cogeneration, which do use natural gas but are extremely energy efficient. About eighty-nine percent for cogen versus fifty-two percent for grid power. Uh, they are also California Air Resources Board-approved due to their efficiency and minimal exhaust emissions. Solar photovoltaic generation also represents a great and vital technology as well. However, solar panels, for the time being, are still made from fossil fuels, and by comparison, only achieve seventeen to nineteen percent energy efficiency on average. The city should strive for optimal energy usage and maximum efficiency of all available energy sources and not cast out vital forms of onsite power generation using natural gas for the sake of one hundred percent carbon-free energy. In pursuit of the true and worthy goal of energy optimization, council should direct staff to amend the ordinance to include exemptions for high-efficiency CHP cogeneration microturbine technology at existing facilities in the city of Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
All right, great. Thank you for your input. Madam Clerk, I see one more person with their hand raised from the public, unless you have additional folks on the phone.
No, Na'ila is the last speaker on this item.
Hello, it's Na'ila Pope-Harden here. I'm the Executive Director of Climate Plan, former mayor, Climate Commission, um, committee member, and also facilitating the Sacramento Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee. Um, I want to start by thanking, um, the council for hearing this today, and also thanks to the staff for giving the Environmental Justice Committee an opportunity to provide feedback on the strategies for retrofitting existing buildings. As we know, electrification is a needed step in meeting our mission reduction goals. And communities deserve to have council thread the needle and do this as thoughtfully, um, as possible. The Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee made five overarching recommendations for the strategy moving forward. The first is making sure that communities are at the forefront of all decision-making, um, making sure that engagement is not siloed. As we go into retrofit, we also need to make sure that we're providing weatheri- weatherization. We're talking about tree canopies, and we're having a holistic approach to, um, our communities. We also want to see incentives prioritized with the end user. We believe that the benefits should go to the folks that are actually paying the electricity, the electricity bills. Um, and we also want to make sure that in the process of retrofitting, folks do not get displaced, and there's economic development opportunities in communities. Uh, our other recommendations are around following community engagement best, best practices and making sure that communities, as they're engaged, are engaged multiple ways, pulling multiple languages and through multiple mediums. It's not enough to just hold public meetings, but there needs to be web forums and phone, um, message boards that folks can comment on, um, so that we're making sure we get input always. We look forward to continued engagement around electrification and working with the council and, um, city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. Appreciate that, and appreciate your, your prior service on the Mayor's Commission as well. That concludes the public comments on this item. Just remind my colleagues that this is on for review and discussion. First, councilmember up, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And first, I have to be remiss if I didn't congratulate Jennifer on being named our permanent climate action lead. You note the name change from interim to permanent. Very well deserved. Excited. You've been doing an amazing job. Um, but second, I just have to say that, you know, I've been on a lot of webinars and calls lately, and Sacramento is really leading the state on this issue. We're leading the state because we're saying that we don't want to leave anyone behind. We actually want to design a process that brings everybody along and, and really ensures that not only that everybody benefits, but that people aren't harmed, um, in the process of doing that. And that's really what this process here that we're outlining is trying to achieve. And what Na'ila just referenced is often called like a whole-house approach, but I often talk a lot about like a whole-community approach. If we're going to go in, if we're going to do this, we're going to talk to communities about switching energy sources, about cleaning the environment inside of their homes. How else can we help them reduce their energy bills? How else can we help them improve their resiliency? How can we give them access to the awesome jobs that are going to be coming out of all of this work, so that they're really benefiting, and it's a very holistic approach that hopefully minimal impact on communities and maximum benef- benefit, which I do believe is very possible, um, because any policy that leaves behind people who can't afford or access the technology or that hurts workers is an inequitable policy, and that's really what we're trying to solve for here. Um, I do want to note to Frank, because I think there's a little confusion. I think he's referencing the technical committee, whose application's just opened. Um, I see this as a multi-pronged approach, sort of a three-dimensional chess approach, where we've got new building policy that's been on the books. We've got this technical committee that's going to help advise on feasibility and exemptions. You've got this new buildings, or this existing buildings approach, and you've got this workforce approach. And so working all together, hopefully next year, we have a strategy that's going to catapult Sacramento into the next stage of our climate leadership, which is really great, and it's going to be something that's all going to come back to you all for review and discussion. But I do want to emphasize that if you have stakeholders that you want to include in this, our doors open in terms of advising this process. We're going to be working hand-in-hand with the consultant team to design this outreach and engagement with the chefs, with the business districts, with the environmentalists, with the EJ advocates, with the workers, um, to really make sure that we're meeting as many needs as we possibly can. So I'm looking forward to getting to work on this. It's really ambitious timeline, but something that I hear every time I participate in one of these webinars is people from across the state that are excited about what we're trying to do and willing to help. Um, so I think there's a lot of great energy and a lot of great attention on what Sacramento's trying to do here, and I'm looking forward to seeing if we can solve this problem in a way that only Sacramento can. So thank you for, um, the privilege of hearing this item again. Happy to answer any questions you may have for me or for Jennifer about where we're at and who engaged in the first stakeholder meeting. It was, I just looked back, I think we had over thirty folks on that first call from across, um, the spectrum of stakeholders and really excited to keep building that group as well. So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate the time.
Great. Good comments. Thank you so much. You know, this is something you're very passionate about, Councilmember Valenzuela. Uh, good input. Okay, I have Councilmember Harris, and then I believe Councilmember Gary, your hand is down, but did you, did you want to speak after Councilmember Harris? I think you're back up there. All right, let's start with.
Yes, I didn't know. Down, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Harris, then we'll go to you. Okay, Councilmember Gary?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Angelique Pro Tem. You know, this is a big issue, and it's going to be a costly issue to retrofit old houses. I know that there's a lot of community concern about it, and especially about inequity and burden on renters. Uh, what this all means, there's a lot of uncertainty ahead. There are many, many factors to retrofitting older houses. Uh, I think actually that we're hopefully going to be led by state action on this, because it's going to require substantial subsidies from PG&E and locally SMUD to be able to affect these kinds of changes. You know, as a contractor, I can tell you, I know exactly what it takes to change from gas to electricity in a home for heating, for cooking, for water heat. It's a pretty extensive remodel, and, uh, it's not cheap. So there are many, many issues that we have to face moving forward. If you look at the staff report and you look at the list of questions that Jennifer Venema has presented in the staff report, it's a long list, and they are deep and difficult questions. And, uh, we've got to work it out for us to answer many of these questions, uh, in the next year. I am very happy that the technical committee is going to be populated soon, because, you know, as far as new buildings are concerned, we're moving along pretty well on that program. But, uh, retrofits are, are a, a difficult discussion, quite frankly. Um, we're going to have to work heavily with SMUD, and, and they are very willing. You know, I've had many discussions with SMUD already about replacing service panels on older homes to create capacity to allow space for new appliances. Many, many moving pieces here. I just want to thank Jennifer for being extremely thoughtful about this. I would encourage my colleagues to really read the staff report, and especially the list of questions the staff have proposed that we need answers to, because they are exhaustive, and they're going to require a lot of thought and input from the council moving forward. But I am glad that we're starting the process now. I would just say this, that, you know, it's great to be a municipality that leads on this issue, and I'm glad that we are, but we can't solve it ourselves. So that's why I look forward to state action, because if we're really going to achieve climate goals statewide and countrywide and worldwide, it's going to take, um, a lot of people to get involved. And I think that that means that we need to get involved with our state legislators on this issue. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Great comments. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Gary, you're up.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, so the only, uh, comments that I have is one, I want to echo, uh, council, uh, uh, we call it, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela's points about, uh, also congratulations to Jennifer Venema for, for the permanent, uh, position um, on that, and great work on moving this forward. On objective number five, I'd like to put some urgency on, on that. Uh, too often, we move through and getting these policies in place, but we don't, and then we move on to the workforce, uh, side of the equation. So I really want to make sure that we put an emphasis as this, uh, as this demand for retrofits and even electrification comes in for new buildings, that we start, uh, looking at the, at the workforce component side, so we can get to, uh, addressing the, um, uh, communities with high unemployment rates, where we can transition them into, into these jobs. I don't want to, I don't want that, that to be, to fall under all of the other complexities in actually achieving this goal. Second, I also echo, uh, Frank Louie and, um, you know, the concerns. I represent Little Saigon. We have a, a lot of Asian Pacific Islander restaurants. And, uh, as they want to move forward on this, we also need to support the, both the advancement in technology, but the training in this, and then the communication, the language aspect of it. Uh, so whether it's one committee or three committees, uh, we do have enough members in that community to participate in those, so, in those panels. So I'd like to also support those efforts there as well. Uh, and then fa- finally, thank you for, uh, for staff for bringing in a lot of the manufacturers. Uh, they're huge employers in our city. Sacramento still is the largest center of manufacturing with high-wage jobs that don't require four-year degrees, so the more that we're working with manufacturers on here to move forward, I think, uh, we're going to get ahead of this. And there is a market, um, if we get ahead of the curve, uh, not just on the policy development, but on the, on the market side of, on manufacturing. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the great work.
Uh, Councilmember Gary, just to make sure here, I know city staff probably have the report in front of them, but you said you wanted to make sure there's emphasis on item five, right? Identify workforce strategies to create new.
Yes, objective five, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't you read it off really quick, so that people know what you're.
Sure. Objective five is identifying workforce strategies to create a new sustainable job and empower new forms of employment uh, in decarbonization, especially affecting trade groups and communities with high unemployment.
Good. Important. All right. Thanks, Councilmember Gary. Let's go to you, Councilmember Luloi. You're up.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll make this very quick. Um, I, I, I agree with all my colleagues. You know, it's a way to go forward. Uh, but there are some facts that need to be stated. Uh, in order to change over an existing structure, um, the average cost per single family is, a single-family unit is anywhere between seventy-five hundred to seventeen thousand five hundred. So I think when we're, when we're talking and. So I think when we're talking and, you know, built this up and the excitement that we're going that route, I think these numbers also need to be brought up and see who's actually going to write the check for them. So with the, with the, with the growth that we're having. So that's, that's the one thing. Number two, you know, as we're, as we're trying to move forward and push on electrification of Sacramento for a better, better lifestyle. The one thing that we're missing right now is how we're damaging and destroying our storm drains. And the number one reason or cause is by many RVs that we have in different districts where our homeless populations are. And how everything of those RVs or what have you is getting literally drained and dumped into the rain, to the rainstorms that we have. So as we're focusing on 20 years from now, being all electrified, you know, going through that electrification, we, I'm hoping that we can also focus on some of the things that we have to do right now because we're damaging the environment or the environment is getting damaged from a whole different perspective. Also, I think it's very important to have small business operators at the table when these discussions are being taken place. Because I can tell you that having these meetings with stakeholders that my colleague Katie brought up, we didn't, like, I, I know businesses that were not notified about these meetings. Or, you know, so if you can just share with, with, I guess, every council member's office about these meetings and who they're open to, because I think it's imperative to get the small guys at the table versus the the large guys. The large guys can always adapt. It's the small businesses that we're going to kill if they're not at the table and they're not sharing the concerns with, with your group and obviously with the city. So.
Councilmember.
Thank you.
Loli, I'll just respond very quickly. Absolutely, we're committed in the process to engage small businesses. They were prioritized in council's resolution. Coming out of the last meeting, we just had those two focused means to get initial feedback. So we could think about the outreach approach. With council's input today, we're going to finalize a consultant contract, develop an outreach strategy and we will absolutely work with every council office to ensure we get everyone at the table. And that will include sharing the cost data that you referenced.
Yeah, I would greatly appreciate it because after all, you know, I'm extremely pro business, especially small business. And if they're not at the table, that would make me very concerned. Because large companies, as I said, they can adjust, no issues, but it's the small ones that typically becomes that middle income families that get hurt by, you know, sun moves. And we've seen it, you know, when gas goes to $5 a gallon, the only, the only category that's getting demolished here is that middle income category. So, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Loloey and Jennifer. I hear councilmember Loloey saying to you also, not, not just working with outreach to the council members offices, but using some of the other traditional sources for reaching businesses too, like the Business Journal and other outreach or the P-Bids and stuff. We just want to make sure we get as many people as possible. It's always the challenge of the city outreach. All right, councilmember Valenzuela, I see you have your hand up. Would you mind if I let councilmember Vang go first and then we'll close out with you? All right, councilmember Vang, I know you have a couple of comments, even if it's just seconding their.
Thanks for hearing from Tim. Yeah, I think councilmember Shana Loli beat me to it. I just wanted to emphasize the need to make sure that our small minority owned businesses, especially our restaurants, are part of the process. And Jennifer, really appreciate you reiterating that importance and that's going to be a priority for city staff. I think we heard from Frank Louie, another business owners, other restaurants, especially off of Stockton Boulevard. And I know councilmember Gara mentioned this as well, we want to make sure that our small minority businesses and restaurants are part of that process. And so just wanted to reemphasize that, but I think that's it. I just want to say again, congratulations to you and thank you so much for your heart and your hustle.
Thank you very much to all of you.
Now it's a real council meeting because councilmember Vang said heart and hustle. It's not real until she gets that out at least once in a meeting. So now we're legit. Okay, thank you so much. Let's go to councilmember Valenzuela here to close us out on this item.
I appreciate that, Mayor Protem, and I appreciate all of the comments. I just want to say that the goals that you have listed on page 10 of this item are verbatim from the resolution we adopted a few months ago. And it's not our goal to say, oh, we got this one right, but we missed on that one. It's the goal to try to solve for all of it, which does feel really impossible right now because it is expensive. And there's going to be a lot of moving parts and three dimensional chess. I think we're beyond that now. Probably like more than three dimensions, whatever that math ends up to be. But I think what is something that I think some of you know about me and why I'm so passionate about this is I get the honor of working with groups who are trying to tackle these issues statewide every day. And when I talk to these groups and I talk to the legislators and I talk to the agencies, there is so much enthusiasm to figure this out in there, but the solutions have to come from the community, right? Like the solutions are going to be different in Sacramento than they are in the Bay, than they are in Fresno, than they are in Los Angeles. Because we're different. We have a different energy system. We've got different community needs that we need to account for. And so I am so excited to try to solve this little really complex problem. And the goal here for me, when I say equitable process and outcomes, when I wrote that in the resolution, is to go beyond the P-Bids. It's like if we just talk to the neighbor associations and the P-Bids and the groups, we want to get to the level of the people who are actually paying those smud bills, who are doing that work, who can ask those questions. And we had some great chefs on our first caller, one chef in particular, who asked some really great questions and brought up some really great points that we want to look into now based on this input. So I'm really looking forward to working with all of you on this. As I said, it's super ambitious. We're going to need all of your help, but I really think if any community can figure this out, it's Sacramento. So just want to put that out there and let's say that I'm looking forward to solving these problems with all of you.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Valenzuela. Just adding my couple of two cents here, Jennifer. First of all, probably most of us, when we got the email saying that you were no longer interim, but wait, what? She was interim? Thought that had been done a long time ago. So congratulations, long overdue to you. You do a wonderful job. There's, I can't imagine there was ever a question we weren't going to have you. I don't know how we would have proceeded. But you got really good comments and feedback from my colleagues. Enthusiastic councilmember Valenzuela, no surprise there. A workforce centered councilmember Gara and some calls for balance from councilmember Vang, Loloey and Harrison. They're all right. So Sacramento wants to do its part as always. Good, will be good actors, will be forward thinking, will be out in front. But it's also important to us that, you know, we find that balance. So we protect small businesses and that we don't overburden homeowners that can't afford it or are already overburdened. And I will throw my two cents in, which is timing is everything. And since we're coming out of the pandemic, just want to make sure that we don't pile on to businesses that are still struggling. I know that's already on your radar, Jennifer, but I'll just reiterate it in this meeting and make sure that as you pull together your technical committee, people like Frank Louie will be really important. Not just because he represents small businesses so well, but because particularly the cuisine API community has special and significant concerns about electrification. So I think you've got some good people on your radar. I'm sure there will be many changes and moves along the way. Thank you for your great work. Do you feel, Jennifer, that you have enough direction and guidance from this council tonight?
We do. Thank you so much for your input. It looks like you're coming back.
All right, great. That is the end of that item then. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby. We now go to council comments, ideas, questions. And I do have board and commission appointments to read into the record to the civil service board.
That first and let's let our colleagues put their hands up for a second. Go ahead and read in those items.
Perfect. Thank you. Civil Service Board is Joy Gonzalez Cabaltic. To the Animal Care Services Citizens Advisory Committee, Cynthia Carsten, Ken Altine, Joe Robastelli, Denise Bell, Jessica Ruers McCabe, Leah Christie Morris and Kathleen Garcia.
That it on your appointments, Madam Clerk?
That is. Thank you.
All right, great. Then we're going to go to council comments. We will start with councilmember Valenzuela and then go to councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have two items first for the next log for future agenda items for consideration in our next meeting. With 10 cities, including Los Angeles, Oakland and San Francisco voting recently to support AB 1400 and HR 1976. I'd like to add for us to consider a resolution considering supporting Medicare for All in California. So that would be for our next log for us to discuss on our next consent calendar, if I get that right. And then I also wanted to just announce that we are hosting a webinar tomorrow on missing and murdered indigenous relatives at 6:00 PM. It's a webinar that I'm hoping will help inform future recommendations for this council. Everybody's welcome to participate. The information is on our webpage, social media. We partnered with Restoring Justice for Indigenous Peoples and family members of missing and murdered indigenous relatives to participate in this event. So I hope you'll tune in if you're available at 6:00 PM tomorrow.
All right. Very good. Thank you, councilmember Harris. Jeff? There?
Got it. I'm unmuted.
All right.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it.
You bet.
We had a very successful vaccination clinic in Northgate at La Superior on Northgate Boulevard. I'd like to thank La Familia and especially UC Davis for coming down and helping us out. And Victor from La Superior for making the space available. I think we inoculated 67 people from the community. Eric Gara came down, Phil Serna came down. It was a great event. Last weekend, we had Screen on the Green. So we had a movie at Glen Hall Park. And I can tell you, people were so thankful to have an event to come to. It was really sad to have to cancel our Pops in the Park program this year, but Screen in the Green did work and it worked well. People were well socially distanced, very safe and had a great time. And so this Sunday, or Saturday, I should say, at Gardland Park, that's September 18th, starting approximately 8:00 PM around dusk, we'll be playing the movie Soul, which I saw at Glen Hall Park and it was a delightful film, great family film. So we're looking forward to a lot of people coming out. And we will also be having another vaccination clinic. And that will be this Saturday again, September 18th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Mutual Housing at River Garden in their community room. Similar situation, just trying to get a under-inoculated community to get their numbers up and keep them a lot safer. So we hope we'll have a great turnout. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You bet. We have one public comment, I believe, from our favorite cheesecake making friend. And then we're going to come back to councilmember Valenzuela for an important adjournment memory. So Madam Clerk, would you please call our public comments there?
Phone number, last four digits, 4366. So public comment from the last four digits, 4366. Mr. Davis?
I think we might have lost him, Mindy. We can ask him if he'd like to try to call back in. We can't hear him. So I see two other people have placed their hands up. Let's go ahead and call on them.
Perfect.
Circle back if.
Perfect. Shirley Toy?
Ms. Toy, we can't hear you. So if you're trying to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Shirley Toy? Okay, third time's the charm. Philip Kim?
Is it our system? Because it sounds like there's three folks that wasn't able to.
I don't think it's our system. Mr. Kim, are you there with us?
Yes, I was just able to unmute a little bit aloud.
Perfect. Go for it.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Philip Kim. I'm a community organizer with the California Nurses Association. I live in District Four in Southland Park. And I'm calling to thank councilmember Valenzuela for adding the Calcare and Medicare for All City Council Resolution to next week's agenda. Also to thank Mayor Steinberg for writing a letter to Congresswoman Matsui, asking her to co-sponsor the Medicare for All bill. And I want to thank councilmember Vang for speaking at the Calcare car rally that we had earlier this year. We have a deeply broken healthcare system that is harming thousands of Sacramentoans who are not able to get the care they need due to the high cost of healthcare, as well as hundreds of small businesses that can't afford expensive insurance premiums. There are 3.2 million Californians uninsured and 12 million Californians who are underinsured and can't afford to use their healthcare because of expensive copays and deductibles. And now in the middle of a deadly pandemic, the majority of insurance companies are no longer waiving the full cost of COVID treatment. This is while they make record profits during the pandemic. AB 1400, the California Guaranteed Healthcare for All Act, also known as Calcare, and HR 1976, the Medicare for All Act of 2021, would both create single payer healthcare systems that would guarantee healthcare for all. Over 50 cities across the country have passed resolutions in support of Medicare for All. And at least 10 cities in California have passed resolutions this year in support of Calcare, including LA, San Francisco, Oakland and several others. And these bills are supported by the California Nurses Association, the Sacramento Central Labor Council, the Democratic Party of Sacramento County and the Democratic Socialists of America Sacramento Chapter. Our city has a really important role in getting our legislators on board. So I urge you all to vote in favor of the resolution next week. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great day.
Thanks for calling in, Mr. Kim, and thanks for your work in the healthcare field. We appreciate you very much. Colleagues, we're going to try Lambert Davis and Ms. Toy here one more time. Madam Clerk, can you pull up Lambert Davis and let's see if we can hear him this time?
Mr. Davis, it's your turn to speak. Mr. Davis is unmuted. Mr. Davis? Shirley Toy? Shirley Toy?
Okay, thank you for trying again, Madam Clerk. We gave that our best effort. And just encourage them both to call back next week if they'd like to participate in public comments again. We are going to shift now to councilmember Valenzuela, who would like to do a special adjournment. She's had a tough go of things over the last couple of weeks here and we all stand in support of you. These are hard to do. Councilmember Valenzuela, proud of you for giving it your best effort. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm honored tonight to adjourn in memory of Mary Tibbetts, known as Kate, a Land Park resident who was slain in her home just over a week ago. By all accounts, the people I've talked to talk about Kate in a variety of loving ways. The folks at Loews knew her because she would donate dog food for dogs of unhoused constituents. The folks at the SPA knew her as someone who cared a lot about seeing her dogs and volunteered and donated to support. Her neighbors said so many amazing things to me over the last week about her out walking her dogs all the time, always friendly, always kind, always trying to help others. It really just seems from her family and from her friends that she was an incredible soul. And it's a great loss and tragedy to Land Park, to her family. And we keep everybody in our hearts in prayers for this amazing person that was taken from us too soon. And our sincere condolences to everybody who knew her. So thank you, Mayor Protem, for letting me adjourn in memory of Kate Tibbetts.
Nicely stated. It looks like councilmember Harris would like to join you in that adjournment. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you again, Mayor Protem. Mary Tibbetts was a wonderful woman and her brother, Dan Tibbetts, is a colleague. He works at SAFCA. He is a wonderful human being. I know that he's deeply bereaved by this. He loved his sister dearly. My heart aches for Dan and for the family. I just wanted to say that, that my heart is with them and this is really, truly a tragedy and one that might have been prevented. But you know, you know, things happen in this world and we suffer losses. But my heart goes to Dan Tibbetts and his family. Sad moment. Thank you.
She was, by all counts, a valued and loved member of the Sacramento community. Nicely stated by our two colleagues. We adjourn in her honor tonight. Thank you all very much. That concludes our council meeting today.